We're ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, all meeting order is six fourteen. Uh, just one announcement, Memorial Day parade is Monday. Uh, May twenty seventh at ten thirty AM, the ceremony that will be in the town hall. And is the schedule on somewhere?
Uh, it's the same kickoff at ten thirty in, in the, uh, town square.
Yeah.
Uh, and yeah, a more detailed schedule was sent to all of the, uh, confirmed participants, uh, just like it, it is every year, but, uh, yeah, let's post something tomorrow, just as a reminder.
Okay, uh, regular business, uh, public comment, anybody wish to make a public comment? None, town manager updates.
Okay, first one is on the, uh, River Road, uh, MVP. We were in, you have, uh, something in the packet, but we were in touch with the, uh, consultant more recently, actually earlier today, and, uh, they are finalizing draft documents for the shoreline stabilization and flood infrastructure adaptation memos. Uh, they said the, uh, they've got a lot of people who have been reviewing from permitting perspective, which is taking longer than they had hoped, but the contract had always provided for the end of May for the next deliverable, so while they had told us, uh, several weeks ago, they thought we might expect it something more like, you know, it's always like May eighth, uh, that timeline slid partly because it's taking longer, partly because I know they have some, um, key staff with illness issues and so forth, so, but the contract always said the end of May, uh, and so they're gonna, they're definitely gonna meet that, uh, so they said they're on, on track against the, uh, uh, kind of, uh, updated drafts for the flood adaptation and the shoreline stabilization, uh, on or before May thirty first. As far as the draft final document, which will compile all of the reports to date and address comments received and include an executive summary, uh, they said it, uh, would be another week or two out, perhaps June seventh or fourteenth. That's gonna be an incredibly quick turnaround, uh, for, for us and for them, because, uh, under the terms of the grant, it all has to be complete by June thirtieth, and as you know, the final, uh, major public event is June twentieth, so, uh, I've told, I've, I've asked the consultants to just, as soon as they know, like, what day they're gonna get it, let us know, just so we can try to keep a little time clear to, to receive and review what they send, because the turnaround times are just incredibly tight.
And it's not the only thing with the type turnaround time during that one.
You got that, right?
Yeah.
But, but, you know, it's, it's, it's going, it's going well, it's just, I mean, it would have been nice to get the drafts, you know, early, but we'll get them per contract, and we, we knew from day one with this grant, it was gonna be incredibly difficult to get it all done by June thirtieth, and it has been, and it will be. Uh, second one, uh, is same geographic area, different grant, uh, really phenomenal news. I mean, this is a big win for the town then, uh, this was only, uh, one of two locations statewide, uh, of course, the whole state didn't apply, and the whole state wasn't eligible, but, uh, but, you know, I think it's really a testament to the efforts, uh, primarily of Michelle and Christine putting that together back in the fall, they did a really nice job with not one, but two applications, and, uh, we'd submitted it back in October, I won't say we'd forgotten about it, but it was kind of, you know, we submitted it, moved on with our lives, and so to hear the note, the notice, uh, 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 Monday morning that we got this grant is great, and one of the big bonuses, at least from my standpoint, is unlike so many of the other grants that we receive, where we get the money, we hired a contractor where we're responsible for scoping, for, you know, procurement, for contracting, for administration, for contract management, for managing the paper, reporting of all of that, that's not what this is, this is the state is, is engaging the consultant, the state is basically managing the project, so while it certainly will affect staff time because we wanna be fully engaged in it, it's a very different type of grant, because the state's actually doing the work instead of giving us the money to do the work, so that's, you know, we're very, very, uh, we think it's very, very promising, uh, and obviously stuff deals really extremely nicely with the MVP, I'm quite sure we wouldn't have gotten it if not for the MVP, uh, and I'm also very hopeful that the fact that MasB E R is gonna be really focused on it is, I expect, gonna help us elevate some of the conversations we've been having about some of the, you know, how can we navigate things like natural heritage in a way that, you know, is, is reasonable without compromising the standards, but in a way that doesn't become a bureaucratic nightmare, uh, anymore than it has to be. So, we're pretty excited about it, we're really, we've been in touch with the grant administrators in the last couple of days, and the last, including, I think, the last day or so, uh, we're really pushing to get this kickoff scoping meeting scheduled before Michelle's last day, because, well, she obviously won't be part of the implementation of it, we, we very much want to get that on the calendar, uh, for the scoping before she leaves, since she's been so central to, up to this point. Uh, next item on the Route one thirteen, uh, we had a, a very substantive, uh, remote meeting on Monday, uh, Christine and I did with Kevin Dandray, uh, they had offered, uh, uh, June twenty fifth, which I think I heard back from everyone, that's gonna work, so we'll start working up in more detail what we're gonna be, um, covering, but that's gonna be, uh, we, we will get that on the calendar, that's, that's a date that you can put in your calendars, uh, so that'll be an evening meeting, we talked about it as being fully remote, if we decide we wanna have it in person with hybrid, that's fine too, uh, but I think, uh, because of the content that we're gonna be covering, I think remote is actually gonna work out really well, either hybrid or remote, because, uh, it's gonna, I think the content lends itself to that, it's not something where it's gonna be like a workshop type meeting, uh, part of what we're looking to do is frankly, to increase the public profile, because there's a lot that's going on, and we're well aware that, you know, people have busy lives, and they're probably not really that aware that we're doing major corridor studies, so we wanna do a lot of public outreach, really, just to bring people along for where we are, remind them of what's going on, uh, reinforce that this is a long-term process, and really setting the stage, you know, trying to position the town to be competitive for future state federal money through the TEP, uh, probably state money, uh, but it all comes through the Bets event, you know, a lot of it comes through the Bets through the state, uh, and also to make sure people understand the kind of focus areas that were identified in the scoping process initially, and just to reinforce and make sure that the, the public as a whole agrees with the areas that were identified, and that we haven't missed anything, uh, so it's, it's partly to increase, uh, public profile, to continue, uh, public engagement, and to really validate what we've done so far, but in the meantime, they have the traffic counters out there last week, uh, Mark and the water department really helpful in getting the, uh, work on Church and Prospect pause for that day, uh, so that it didn't affect the validity of the counts, and, uh, yeah, so they got their counts, uh, Chief Dwyer earlier this week has sent over a complete list of all the accident reports, uh, which were sent off to the consultant, so that's very helpful, uh, and, you know, one, one other thing I'll say on Route one thirteen, you know, we talk about it like one project, at this point, it really is at least four different projects, uh, because there's the corridor study, there's the Page and Pipe State Crossing, where we're, we're working toward getting a hundred percent, uh, permitting with MasB E R P for that, there's now this, uh, separate focus on the middle high school cropping area, where we had the twenty-five thousand dollar earmark from the state, specifically targeted toward either Page or the middle high school, because Page, uh, is basically fully funded, at least through permitting, we were able to redirect that twenty-five thousand to the middle high school, uh, so we're working to get the contract in place with the Commonwealth in the coming weeks, once we do, we have a so, all worked out with, uh, T E C that as soon as we have the state funding under contract, we can actually do the contract with T E C to really do a deeper dive upon the, that middle high school farm lane area, and then the other one, which has always been lagging a little behind in timing, is, uh, the fifty thousand dollar earmark we got from the Mass Office of Tourism, uh, which, as we've always had, had earmarked for the, uh, town center, and as we've said all along, our intent there is to actually do a separate procurement for that, uh, and while we may end up engaging T E C, we definitely wanna hear from other firms as well, uh, partly because of bandwidth issues, and just trying to get, you know, make sure we get focused on, because we don't want that spread too thin, uh, and timing this has been a challenge at, at times, so I think potentially getting a fresh set of eyes, a different traffic engineering firm focused on the town center is, is gonna work out well, uh, so that's another one, where we're working to get the fifty thousand under contract with the state, so that we can then go forward to, to, uh, you know, with some kind of scoping and procurement there.
And when's the deadline for that?
That one's not till twenty twenty-six in terms of expenditure, it's, it's ARPA, so it's gonna be under contract this calendar year, uh, but we have significantly more time before we have to spend it, that's, that's part of why it hasn't been a front burner until this point. Uh, next item, the Church of Prospect water main replacements, uh, we did make the decision earlier this week to, to go with one more year upon anticipation notes, just really to hedge against, uh,
Did we skip something?
Yeah.
Oh, the forty yard, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Municipal energy aggregation.
Uh, yes.
Beast of the,
Oh, jeez.
Skip that. I thought, I thought my paper affected.
Uh, so, yeah, municipal energy aggregation, that plan was submitted to D P U on Tuesday, uh, we did get some, uh, comments last week, about a week ago, from the Energy Sustainability Committee, uh, and the, uh, Colonial was able largely to build those comments in, so.
I, you know, I, I just did a quick scan to see if the, the references to the town hall have changed, and they had not.
Oh, they hadn't?
No.
I was hoping all the changes were made.
Okay, interesting, um.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I did a, you know, fifteen second line, find town hall, and there were twenty-four occurrences still, and there were twenty-four occurrences before, so, huh, seems like they missed that, I didn't even look for the changes, I just figured use that as an easy entry.
Okay, alright. They told me they'd made the changes, so, okay, now, were you looking at the?
The one that they,
The one that, the one that was sent out, or the one that actually went to D P U?
Oh, okay, I was looking at the one that was in the packet, so.
Okay, uh, I know when I picked up the packet Tuesday, and so took it from Rebecca, it was showing three different times, the packet was six hundred pages, I'm confused on that, yeah, she mistakenly put it in a number of times, so I took them all out, I said the one in the packet, I believe, was the one that went to D P U, so, so if, if that does not show the changes, then, um.
Yeah, I guess we, we probably need to come.
Okay, yeah, I, I didn't confirm it, I just took what, yeah, Colonial, I told them that they, they made the changes, so, they didn't make all the changes on the transmiddle memo, as for the reasons that were, I think, outlined in the, in the memos, you know, the correspondence with the Lisa, uh, but on the plan itself, I understand, was they have made those changes.
Okay.
So.
Also, yes, we're done with that, right, and now it's just before the?
Yes.
Coming?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, the forty yard and MBTA zoning, uh, Sue and I had a remote meeting last, uh, Tuesday with the forty yard program administrators, and we, we talked through all of our questions, and we got, uh, answers to all of our questions, I got a few pages of notes here, uh, very helpful call, we did, there were a couple of specific questions we asked that are, uh, in the MBTA communities, which they didn't touch, because that's a totally different staffing, and, uh, we have sent those to the state, and we haven't got a response yet, so, and those are really important questions, um, uh, including on the, you know, whether they're gonna recognize the total zoned units, or the net zoned units, because the way it works under forty yard for the financial incentives, is you get the financial incentives based on the new, uh, allowed growth, so if your underlying zoning allows eight units today, and your new zoning allows twenty-eight units, they credit you for twenty units, the question we've asked MBTA communities is, will they recognize twenty units or twenty-eight units, and that's gonna matter.
Yeah.
That's gonna matter a lot in terms of whether it's, uh, gonna make, whether forty yard is gonna make sense, so that's a key question that we're looking for an answer, and then the second was on the, uh, uh, contiguous acreage requirements in, uh, the MBTA communities, and whether if, if one of your districts comprises fifty percent or more of the required density, whether we can have other districts that are in the aggregate meeting the number, but are smaller, uh, because that's gonna make a big difference in terms of whether this, uh, more of a scattered site approach is gonna, uh, be doable under forty yard. Is doable under forty yard, the question is whether, whether it's satisfying, yeah, so those two questions, which are, I mean, it's just.
So is your kind of overall plan to resolve these questions with the state before we look into the hiring?
Yeah, yeah, because this is gonna help, this is really gonna tell us if we, if it's, if it provides a potential benefit relative to kind of, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so, once we have a question, you know, answers to that, we'll have a back on for another update.
Did you see that press release that Senator Char is working on? Uh, regulations to slow down or change on MBTA?
No, I didn't see that.
Uh, the Housing Coalition is asking for people to comment and send in letters to support this.
Okay, alright, feel good to know about, yeah. Then, okay, so now to the Church of Prospect, uh, we, uh, yeah, we decided to go with bands instead of bonds, really to hedge against future unknowns in the project, and I think that was a smart decision, uh, just because once we go long-term borrowing, if we come upshore and have to go back to the voters to have them appropriate retained earnings, that's just, no one wants to do that, and so, uh, you know, it's just another year of paperwork and somewhat higher interest rates on the short-term borrowing, would be if we went to band, to, uh, to bonds, but I think in the scheme of things, it's, uh, you know, I think it's the right decision.
Yeah, roughly, with the net differences and that.
On the interest?
Yeah.
No.
And they fire off along in a project that they can lightly say there's not, like, ledge or some huge.
I think so, but Rob, do you wanna jump in on that one, because I know you had a meeting, what, Friday on site with Mark?
Their insurance is mostly related to the payment.
Yeah, the financials of the pay.
Yeah, because, for instance, the contract went out for some reason with Church Street being four inch versus six inch, so there was just, and Bob and Mark re-reviewed it, I mean, we, we got some really good numbers, uh, from Tater and Howard, but unfortunately, the, that last little bit of it is, is, is still an unknown, it could be a sizable, I don't know, it was, and, you know, the timing, there was a point in time where you go all the trim around someone, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm like, I just don't know the answer, which is why I'm asking, I'm trying to stir up, why does the select board in the town get involved in the financing component of this, whereas it's the enterprise fund?
So that's, no, that's a great, great question, uh, that's, you know, the, that's really, I mean, it's a really good question, because it's, well, an enterprise fund is, is independent only insofar as that it is a segregated accounting structure, it, an enterprise fund is not a wholly self-sufficient body.
It's not a separate, it's not a separate entity.
Correct, it, it doesn't have a business office, it doesn't have a, you know, it doesn't have an independent relationship with Hilltop Securities or Lockwood as bond council, it doesn't do that, it, it hasn't ever done that, there are towns, uh, like the last time I worked in, where the water was completely a separate building, separate staff, separate equipment, like a completely, it was not a town entity, it was a totally separate thing, that's not the case here, it's never been the case here, so that's where these indirect costs come in, because in theory, that's the ratepayers paying the general fund back for the share of, of resources it gets, and that's, that warrants, I mean, that'd be a great topic for a future meeting, because it's something Jenny and I have spent many, many hours on the indirect cost, but it's never really, for whatever reason, it never really risen to the level that's been like a, you know, it's, it's a very rich area for discussion, because it's all about what's the right offset for the water ratepayers to account for the level of effort that town staff put in that is necessary to, to, you know.
And it's likely to get greater going forward with all these projects, yes.
Yeah, so, so that's, and that's one thing where, like, in the last, uh, two years, uh, where, since the town has now paid off all of its general obligation debt, and all of the only remaining debt is water, there's a case to be made that one hundred percent of the cost, at least until the town starts taking on the more non-water supported debt, uh, that a hundred percent of the, you know, costs associated with, uh, you know, bond issuance, or, or, um, uh, you know, bond council, all of that, as well as the level of effort, I mean, you see the official statement that I sent around, that's something that me and Jenny and Caitlin, we put in a ton of time on that, and that's to the good of the town, we have to do that, but we wouldn't have to do that if we weren't carrying water debt, so, so I think the indirect costs, uh.
Do, how do you account for, for your time and, and?
We, we have a, we have a pretty complicated spreadsheet that goes back to before I started, we, we tweaked it, uh, a bit since I've been here, but it's fundamentally the same method they used when I started, which is basically, uh, it's an Excel workbook, where for each town department that has any role in water, uh, it basically, we, we plug in the personnel, what their annual rate is, what percentage of their time we estimate goes toward water, um, and we have different methods that we use for that, uh, expenses, you know, coffee machine, all of that stuff, and we assign a percentage, and that all translates to a bottom line dollar, and, and, uh, we did adopt, the board adopted back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, an indirect cost policy, uh, that was based on the V L model, and it basically outlines exactly the process we go through, so every year, we calculate that, we present it to the water, you know, this year, it, it got a bit lost in the shuffle, largely because there was so, and it wasn't a lot, I shouldn't say that, because it was never forgotten about, it just, with all of the time the Water Commission was rightfully putting toward its own resetting process, like, there was, they had no bandwidth to really, like, hear some of these things, and it would, it would have created a huge firestorm over what, in the scheme of things, for the general fund, like Jenny and I think we easily could justify a ten or fifteen thousand dollar increase in indirect costs, easily, that would have created World War Three with the Water Commission, in the scheme of things, ten to fifteen thousand on the general fund side isn't gonna move the dial a lot, and I remember there was a meeting, Rob, you probably remember this, just Rob was kinda like, why don't we have the indirect costs yet, and, and the answer is that there's a bit of a circular logic to that, because we're setting the indirect costs for FY twenty-five, those are based on projected FY twenty-five costs, we haven't approved the general fund budget, we haven't set salaries and wages, so it's, it's like this circular thing, so it's always a last minute thing, and Rob looked at me like, Thomas has not done it, I'm like.
Did I, did I strike an attitude?
I don't know. But anyway, but, yeah, so indirect costs, it's, it's very difficult, because we can't, you know, it's, you're relying on unknowable, so, so there's always some kind of close enough, you know, it's not an exact science, but some of the bigger discussions of like, this issue of like, the time toward borrowing, which over the years has been apportioned a certain way, but now that we, we're not carrying any debt other than water debt, like, there's a very clear case to be made, you should just put that all to water, you know, it, it, this cycle wasn't the right time to hit that one, so, so basically, I, I, I tend to kind of give, uh, a pretty modest increase, like a four percent increase, and then kind of back into that.
So you calculate that at the time of the budget?
Correct, yeah, because they need that to set, set their budget, so, uh, but I think it does warrant a bigger discussion, because I know in some towns, they would take, um, you know, what square footage is water of this building, and apportion some of the heating and utility costs and so forth, like, they take it to that, to that degree, so it's, it's, however, it's, you can, it's however deep you wanna go on it, and so Jenny and I, every year, would make a calculation, we put in a fair amount of time toward that, but, you know, we, we're not gonna put in like fifty hours, because it's just not, it's not worth it for, you know, the, the amount we get is just short of sixty grand, I think, and so even if we could push that to seventy or seventy-five thousand, like, that's not worth fifty hours of my and Jenny's time to like, make that calculation and then go to war with the Water Commission.
But, but it is a good, good thing to keep an eye on.
It is, because it's, it's, you know, it does represent, it's, we are not supposed to be subsidizing the water, so the indirect cost is supposed to be absorbing all of the costs, and that's the cost to, to open the mail and manage all the financials, and all the work Jenny does on managing their financials, it's like, that really should be paid by the ratepayer.
Yeah, so you don't have a true cost of your business.
Right, and to make it even more fascinating of a conversation, they didn't have to get into how much of the water department acted to serve, serve, say, the fire department.
Well, we do that, because the fire department, as Chief Dwyer knows, pays a bunch of money back to the ladder, every, for the hydrants, right.
So, but beyond that, there's, there is a conceptual level above that, about, about a certain amount of water department resources are really more dependent of fire flow and supporting the fire, so, I mean, that's how.
But I think that's what the hydrant, I think that's what the.
No, the hydrant, what, I could be wrong, but I believe the hydrant only recaptures the cost of the hydrant, that's it, no, no.
Yeah, it, it weren't a bigger, this.
Yeah, it weren't, that's what I was trying to say, was this thing, you could let this thing go up level and level.
But the, the hydrant rental paid from the general fund to the water fund is significantly higher than the indirect cost.
Yeah.
Higher than the general fund. I'm sure, yeah, that only recaptures our actual cost on hydrants, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Well, so we need our actual indirect costs.
Yeah, so that, that would be a great topic for, for something.
Yeah, we could have competing, uh, fillbacks, you know, they, no, but anyways, it's, it's, obviously, it's, it's a thing to keep an eye on, because, um, you, you want it to be ultimately defensive.
So that's a much bigger answer than probably Chris was looking for, like we did.
No, but that's, I was wondering why all this time is getting spent, and what, how does it get accounted for, so.
Theoretically, that's, yes.
Theoretically.
Okay, we'll get to the real answer some other time.
Yeah, yeah, you, you just opened it up a can of worms, no.
Well, if it makes things better, it'll work.
No, it's okay, it is a great topic.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I can only, so I hate, I have another thought, too, but we'll talk.
Right, exactly.
All right, other items that aren't?
Uh, let me see, uh, the power options, we did sign the agreement, uh, for the, uh, de-harmonization roadmap, and, uh, we confirmed with, uh, Tracy Watson, so we're gonna just backcharge them for twenty percent of it, and Jenny confirms that we can, uh, pay that out of, uh, we can encumber that for twenty four funds, uh, for this, since it's under contract, even though the work will extend it to next year, uh, next one ahead, and there, we did get the permit extension from the Middle Street Bridge, from the, uh, Westbury Bridge Concom, and we just got confirmation today that Newbury Port Concom also approved an extension on that, and we got correspondence, I think, yesterday, that the Army Corps of Engineers had, uh, extended that permit, I think, till twenty twenty-eight, so, you know, it's just.
Housekeeping, but.
Housekeeping, but good that.
Important.
You know, it definitely validates the decision the board made back in January to keep, to get back, to get B S C back under contract and make sure none of these permits expire.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, is that it for updates?
Uh, that's all I have, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna do the department updates, the summer caving, and then we'll go to the, uh, appointments.
Sure.
We can keep waiting out to you.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Butch, are you presenting here?
Yeah, I'm going up there, uh, yeah, wherever it's comfortable, yeah.
All right. That works.
Uh, we have, uh, paving dates, original.
Uh, we have uh paving dates, originally it was the June tenth. I found out today that it's been moved up uh in order of when yet. Uh, when that becomes apparent, we're going to send out notices to the residents that are going to be affected. Um, we are planning on paving Crane Act Street from Main Street to Georgetown Road. Uh, just this past week, we've done fracturing out there preparing for the paving. Um, after that, we've done, uh, Merrill Street has been cracked too, that's going to be the next after Crane Act. Uh, then we've got eight hundred foot feet of Bachelor Street at the Meeting House still in some of the Brooklyn section. Basically from the God Rail back towards Main Street around the corner, where it's pretty rough. That's all going to be uh paved. Uh, Hickory Lane, uh, we talked to Brock's rep last week and said the best thing for that would be to mill it completely down two inches and then put an overlay, uh, finish top on top of that. And he goes, we would do the best thing for it, so that's, we'll get prices on that. And we get that restarted, we uh okay by the state, it shouldn't be a problem. Um, we were originally looking at having the whole town hall kind of all made one colder pavement. Uh, I had rocks in there, they're two weeks ago and whereas a smaller sized project, their requirement will probably do more damage than not, and they have some subcontractors that they use that I believe are state certified to do stuff like that. Uh, so I'm working on that down now. Um, and that's basically all I have there.
And so that's just summer, that would be the time period.
Yeah, like I say, uh, it should be starting, it's probably now somewhere in the middle of June. I would say probably maybe close to two weeks. And then we can start looking at some other projects and go out. I talked to Angus this morning on one, early on one. Um, mainly, I don't know if you've ever heard of River Road, it should have some sort of shimcoat on it, save it, because there's some really bad sections of it that if we don't, we're going to have a bigger problem. So I think some sort of discussion on that should be taken up and then uh, there are some other roads that I have to go over, but that is one of the big ones, even though like there's one engineering is kind of down there, the save it's still worthwhile for local, I think it's what it's all about.
So do you have an overall kind of program in mind for town roads, like a five year plan to, or a ten year?
I haven't had a chance to look into it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the projects this year are the ones that Wayne had set forth. Uh, so I'm going to finish these up and then get a plan going.
Okay. We did talk when we met earlier today that, you know, tonight's briefing would be what's under contract. But we, we both felt that getting Butch back and maybe over the summer uh to talk about some of these kind of next year. Because as, as you, those of you who've been on the board longer, it's always a collaborative process between the department and the board. Uh, as that kind of, these are what he's thinking of, you guys give input and then he kind of refines uh, you know, the next, uh, the next batch of uh, of roads. And there is the potential, uh, if, if it's, if it's decided that there's something that's a nearer term item, uh, there would be the potential, uh, if we chose to, to expand the contract with Brock's, you know, once we're further along with what they're already under contract to do. Uh, to do something as early as like this kind of fall, that's not currently in the contract. Because we do have chapter ninety monies that are available. If we wanted to expand that contract, we could do that.
But they don't go away.
They don't go away, yeah.
We have uh private to do some stuff with this fall and this year.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yeah, I just hope if we do almost fall, I know last time we had fall paving when, when uh Crane Act Street was uh, that turned to dirt. Uh, uh, well, good luck.
The fall, um, it did, uh, because of the Christmas tree farm.
It was the Christmas tree farm, but also it was, it was also that much of that. Um, you know, we actually had some weather running against us.
Yeah, I just, so I've done, I've paved some years back, a year ago, we, we paved in the morning and sanded at night.
Yeah.
I want to avoid that. Now that's kind of the thing.
But it ain't, huh?
They have to wait for the spring. Uh, I can add one more thing. Uh, we have a new employee signing June third. Uh, he's a West Newbury resident, was on Merrill Street. Uh, we had a really good interview with him. And I brought him back in for a practical interview where we kind of go all the way to try and really, you know, John Solomon went with him to see how he did, smooth eyes and operate wise and, and have a problem. We also put him in a backhoe, this and things, and all of it. Uh, he was smooth, competent, and uh seemed very knowledgeable, so he signed in.
Excellent.
Does he, are there certifications that he needs still? Aren't, aren't there?
There's a license.
Yeah, yeah, licensing, does he have licensing already?
Oh yeah, he's already, yeah. Yep, he'll be ready soon, he gets here, he can go in anything.
Right, what's his background in municipal G P W or?
He had um fourteen years with the Georgetown company. Uh, he had, I think, eight years, six or eight years with the city of April. So he's been in Snowy Mobile, we used to run the uh Greater Downtown, I guess, from what he said. Uh, so he's had all kinds of experiences in what we do. So a very.
So as, as you probably assume or recall, this is the FY twenty five budget position of the board now, for instance. Yeah, but it's great, that's right.
Okay, Butch, appreciate the update.
Thank you. Anytime, anybody wants to call me.
Great. Um, let's quickly do the Sage Center and then we'll move ahead to action items. Um, so upcoming activities are the Woodman's Trip, June twelfth. And that was it on that, um. Also, the next patient to pack it is the announcement from Mass Municipal Auditors and the Council Association.
Yeah, I meant to put this on the agenda, it's just a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember.
Really worked hard for this.
Yeah, so this is um writing to inform you that your town accountant Jennifer Walsh recently passed examinations and that all the education and experience requirements necessary to be recognized as a certified governmental accountant by the Mass Municipal Auditors Association.
Well, you're supposed to share.
All right, Jim, pipe down. Congratulations, Jenny. Great accomplishment. All right, let's move ahead to action items. Um, A, request to appoint two full-time police officers. Do we have your other officer here?
No, uh, he was unable to make it tonight, but you all met him the last time.
All right.
Um, but this is Megan Conant, um, she is the other finalist from our recent process for two full-time positions. Um, so I want to introduce Megan to the, to the board and of course the audience and uh, she scored very well in our process. Uh, her focus really was on working for a small town police department, which is exactly what we're looking for. Um, she's furthering in education right now. Hopefully getting her associates and then moving out to our bachelor's degree next. Which is my family of um law enforcement as well, so they're, I believe they're excited for this opportunity, you know?
Yes. Great, um, questions on interview?
Sounds good to me.
Some of the chief has done all the appropriate checks and everything.
Yes, sir.
Just asking.
Uh, yeah, no, so once the appointment is complete, then we can finalize the remaining uh disciples and whatnot that she's been having.
She's going to Academy and all that, Chris?
Yeah, so we're going to put her into the Academy as soon as possible. Most likely it'll be Winfield Academy uh coming up in fall.
So how long would it be before Megan was able to, or she worked it full time?
So she'll start the academy, she'll start field training with us now.
Yeah.
Sort of getting an overview of the job of the town. Um, we talked a little bit on the walkover about how select board meeting goes, a little bit of civics. So, but you know, twenty-four, twenty-five weeks and she'll be returning to us, academy trained, or the North Hill training that she got.
Excellent. Any questions about um Zach or Chief Wire?
No, I do recall we, uh, get the, all the internal form.
And he's certified already?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I, I can move the point, um, I'm sorry. There we go. Yeah, uh, thank you. There was there, yeah, uh, Megan Conant and Zachary Dunn. Um, as full-time officers, uh, police officers, um, uh, it gets affected immediately and um, so I don't know if you've already sorted it, explaining you're not making, but um, the, the appointments uh typically occur at the beginning of fiscal year, so it's only affected through June thirtieth, but that'll be your appointment after June thirtieth.
Second.
Which is really just a kind of a, thanks, your process. You, you don't get retested or re.
All right, one favor. All right, I'm welcome to take care of it.
You're welcome. We're already by to absolute introductions as the training goes forward.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, let's see, is there something short we could get in here? Uh, how about the one day liquor license?
Don't see that much, right?
There, we can be, I guess.
Um, we can pull up on that, uh, request for Camille, are you Camille? No?
I'm not.
But that, oh, you're not Camille, then. Uh, any thoughts, Angus, and where we can go from here? We have like seven minutes, six minutes.
Do the one day.
Well.
Well, but we do, I think, but we're going to have someone.
Yeah, Mayor, absolutely, General.
Okay, so we do have some people on Zoom uh who are, who don't have names shown, so. Uh, and, you know, my brain.
Um, Fred, do you know how many members of the um library commissioners will be attending?
I, I do, I do not, um, they've been reminded today, um, I see.
We have three, we have another one. Four.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we should wait until actually, you know, four minutes to do this, or whether we could go ahead now?
No, Jason's also on one, two, and one, yeah, in there.
Fred, is it okay with you if we go ahead, or would you like to wait?
Um, sure, uh, I think, well, you can tell me, but I think we need five for a quorum, but perhaps I'm wrong.
You do when you have five.
Uh, hold, hold on a minute, I just need to plug in my computer here. I don't, I don't know who resident one O one is, but I don't, I don't know how we have five, hold on a minute. Uh, Jason, me, Paula.
Laurel's here too.
Yeah, but she's not a member yet. But I, right? Are my, no, 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 she is, she is, she is. So that's four, and who is resident one O one?
We have somebody in the audience here.
Fred, it's Gary.
Uh, oh, okay, so he, okay, I see you, all right, so we would have a quorum, so, uh, sure, go right ahead.
Okay.
Now we're due to three minutes.
Fair point. Okay, um, are you able to pull up the application, Angus?
Yeah.
Trouble finding.
Yeah.
Great, so this is a joint appointment by the select board and the Board of Library Commissioners because it's a partway through the, the uh, the year. Um, Monique, do you want to say anything about yourself or?
Um, I've been a resident for ten years, I am a regular patron at the library, probably at least on a weekly basis. Um, I volunteer at the book sales the last couple of years and I really love this opportunity to serve for our town. And I feel like um being a trustee of the library would be the perfect fit for me.
Any questions?
No, that was the right answer.
Brad, do you, do you or your fellow board members have any questions?
Um, no, we, we met um with Monique on um, at our last meeting and, you know, she, uh, we were sort of impressed with her and seems like she has a high interest in joining the, it's the Library Board of Trustees. Um, and not commissioners, but that's just a, uh, yeah, it's okay. Um, so yeah, no, we, we're all very happy to have her join us.
Okay, would you like to make a motion? I'm sorry.
I just want to say how to get it, uh, you said probably through the year appointment, was there somebody resigned out of this?
Actually, uh, formerly actually happened, she got married and changed her name, so I don't remember her married name, but she uh moved to there.
Okay. Thank you.
Brad, it's our custom to allow the, the board that's being appointed to, to make a motion?
Sure, I, I move that we um, uh, that the select board and the Library Board of Trustees appoint Monique Landry for uh the remainder of the term that was recently vacated, uh, which would expire uh basically almost a year from now.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
I actually just questioned, so by almost a year from now, I mean, it's actually, so June thirty to twenty twenty-five.
Because it gets elected position, so.
Okay, okay, right, great, that's forgot, right.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Bring it on.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, thank you for, for volunteering.
Great, tha- thank you very much and thanks to everyone from the Library Board that joined in or showed up.
That's great.
All right.
All right, the next item.
Monique, you'll be contacted by the Town Clerk's Office this morning.
Okay.
So Jim's office will be attached with you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
That's, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will slide to meet here.
Um, we committed to starting the R C, the uh, pipeline project at seven. Um, and if we can do this quickly, can you follow a question on that? The license?
Not a lot, I do it quickly.
Okay.
I didn't give you the.
All right. Let's go ahead then and do the item B under action items, request for one day liquor license by year, more, open house. Hi, Mary.
Hi.
All right. Chris, if you had questions, go for it.
Yeah, again, it's not specific to this one, but I found it curious, it's already been advertised online. And yet the permit's just coming in now, so I think timing, so kind of what with this signage, something we have to become a little more in tune with.
It should have been applied for much earlier and I apologize for that.
Well, I know.
We had some turned in staff.
Yeah, just puts a, a burden on this boy to approve it almost because the community is expecting it and anticipating it. And like I say, I'm not just on you because there's been other occurrences with other permits. And I'm getting a little um, use that word, I think hopefully we'll look at this closer eyes in the future, so there's that. My second question is, and the chief is a vote, it says Ben.
I'm having trouble hearing, sorry. The chief.
One detail officer will be required.
Yes, we're paying for that. Um, Melissa called today, she couldn't make it tonight, so she's actually in charge of the open house, but I'm filling in for her tonight. Um, but she said all, all the information has been submitted and um, we have our um, the girls serving are both licensed with their tip certification. Um, we have the food, I think it's been approved. Um, I wish she was here, she dumped this on me last minute. But um, yes, she said today, she said you definitely talked to the police and we are hiring a detail uh for parking.
Yeah, so I spoke with the chief, um, I had said make sure that they reach out to you in your conversation. I, I said, chief, can you let me know what the result of that was? He said one detail officer, there will be other officers there.
Yeah.
That's what they said last year.
Yeah, okay, um, and so they, but he is requiring a paid one day detail, not specifically, so. I'm deferring to the chief, asking that because, you know, up to five hundred people in a three hour timeframe with alcohol, one to me seems like, but the chief.
We didn't sell much beer last year. Um, it's mostly family, it's a family event. Um, and if it's an issue. And if it's an issue, we can do away with the beer next year, um, but we do have a donor that donates it, and it's a hot day. We have an issue. And we have people for parking as well, we have people on both, we have a dirt driveway and a paved driveway, we have four, uh, three or four parking detail people as well to make sure people are coming in and parking appropriately. We park in the big field out front.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the England Be Quiet Rescue, unless one day permanent event.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, when should we apply ahead of time, like ideally a couple months ahead of time, obviously before we put the flyer out?
Yeah.
I think a month ahead of time would be good.
One month, okay, I'll make that.
Advertising it?
That's what I'm.
Yeah, right.
So not advertising, yeah.
Before, yes, we'll do apologies for that. I hope you all can make it, it's a great time, and the police and fire truck will be there, and we have a good band this year. Anyway, thank you very much.
All right.
You're great.
Okay, now we'll move on to the informational updates on the new report, our reservoir pipeline project.
Sure, screen.
You want to say?
Yeah.
Okay, so just, um, kind of full disclosure, um, this is our interpretation of the project based on the information we've been able to obtain. Uh, we did invite a member of the new report of the city to appear and present this information, and then we weren't able to, um, to get somebody here. So we think it's important for town residents to know, uh, what this project entails, and so this is just providing as much as we know at this point, but it's certainly not complete. So, um, what we'll talk about tonight is just a kind of view of the project at a high level. Um, what new report has stated the need for the project is, um, the individual components, um, then where we're at with the project, where new report is at with the project, what our role is, and then next steps. So the, the kind of overall synopsis of the project is, um, installing a piped connection from Indian Hill Reservoir down to the upper and then the lower artichoke, um, that will require a pump station at Indian Hill. And the reason for this is that will allow mixing of these three water sources to, um, improve the redundancy of the water supply as well as reliability. So in terms of the individual, oh, for the need for the project, go ahead, sorry. Um, so this is from all, um, Newburyport's master plan for their, their water resources and a number of other documents. Um, there's challenges with the reservoir water quality, primarily because the upper and lower artichoke, um, reservoirs are fairly shallow. So that means the, um, they become warmer, um, than the Indian Hill reservoir does because they're shallow, uh, and algae blooms has, um, been a problem in the past couple of years. They also have higher magnates and iron levels, uh, which the Indian Hill reservoir does not, so that's why they wanna be able to pipe water from Indian Hill and bring that to the treatment plant. Uh, additionally, climate change impacts, um, are becoming, uh, pretty serious, uh, with the reservoirs, and not only for drought conditions, which means the temperature is higher, especially with a shallow reservoir, that's a problem, but the potential for, um, the Merrimack River to backflow into the lower artichoke. And that was, uh, the recent project down at the, uh, lower artichoke dam was, um, putting in a, a temporary setup so that they could prevent that. Um, and I, the bottom line of this is they feel that their water supply is vulnerable because they supply water to West Newbury, our water supply is also vulnerable because of these, um, challenges. So in terms of individual components, um, as I mentioned, at the Indian Hill reservoir, they'll need to be two, they'll need to be a pump station in order to get the water through this pipeline down to the upper and lower artichoke reservoirs. They're proposing, uh, or looking at two potential locations, and we'll, we'll look at that on a map. Um, and then from there, there'll be a pipeline running to the upper artichoke dam, and then from there to the, uh, lower artichoke pump station, and then we'll get into the, um, Newburyport's, uh, distribution system to their treatment plant. So this, um, kind of general map, this is the whole plan, you can see the, uh, upper artichoke, I mean, the, uh, Indian Hill reservoir in the lower, uh, left-hand corner, and then the upper towards the middle, and then the, uh, the lower, so that yellow line is the pipeline, the next couple sides are closer up details, you can see what's going on, but this just gives you a sense of the scale of the project. So basically, they wanna take water from the Indian Hill and pump it all the way to the other reservoirs. So this shows the, um, the lower and upper artichoke reservoirs, that yellow line is the pipeline that will run along, um, streets in West Newbury. Once it gets to the upper artichoke dam, the two options are either doing this submerged pub pipeline, which is the red through the reservoir, or the yellow on the Newburyport side of the lower artichoke, that'll be an above ground um, pipeline, so they're still trying to determine which is the best approach. And then the next slide just is the bottom of that overall plan, so you see the Indian Hill reservoir, the western shore location that the little box is one option for the pump station, and then there's an eastern one down on the bottom, um, that's near the current spillway. And depending on which one of those two locations they choose will determine whether the pipeline goes, you know, in the yellow up Molton Street and Cherry Hill, or the black from the east location, um, of Indian Hill. And the next slide shows in detail these two locations, so on the west side, uh, that green parcel is a town-owned parcel. Um, and then if you look at the east location, that's the, the pinkish area is, um, Greenbelt owned, and then the reddish is Newburyport owned. So that would be on property that they own or control. And then these next side, this is three or four slides that just compare these two locations, um, from the report's point of view, this was put together by their engineer, A. Kong. This was as of, uh, December, uh, October of 2022. So some of this may have changed, but this is the most current information we have. So proximity to the shoreline, they're both the same, they're within 100 feet permitting, they'll require the same permitting, uh, weapons protection act permitting. Um, the land, uh, on the west, they would require purchase from West Newbury to be able to use that land, uh, whereas on the east side, it's already owned by the, uh, city. So the transmission pipeline route, um, on the west location, immediate access to a public roadway, which is an advantage, um, the distance to Indian Hill and the Garden Street junction would be 4,000 feet on that side. Um, versus the east, the distance would be 4,850, that's still pretty comparable. But on the eastern location, it would have to cross Greenbelt land, uh, and there's also existing streams, so that could increase the permitting requirements. Uh, the intake pipeline length, so from the pipe station, there'll be a pipeline running into the reservoir, a deep pipeline. Um, on the western location, it'd be 900 feet to get to the, the deep location that they need, uh, whereas the east shore location would only be 200 feet, so that could be a potential advantage. Um, same requirements for pipeline shoring and de-watering, um, they don't have to, um, trench the, um, the pipeline in both locations. Side access, uh, it's very accessible from Molton Street on the western location, um, whereas on the other side, there's a 3,700-foot gated access road from Molton, so it's a little bit further. Staging would have to be on private land for the eastern location, but on the western side, it would be on West Newbury land, so that could be more challenging. Terms of O and M, it's pretty straightforward on the west shore location, it's very accessible from Molton Street, um, there's two options on the east shore location, and you have to determine which one is, um, is more advantageous, some steep slopes, a lot of proposed pipeline there. They also looked at visibility of the pump station, um, it's highly visible, uh, from Molton Street on the west side, as well as adjacent properties along the reservoir. Uh, whereas on the east side, it's pretty well hidden from both Molton Street and adjacent properties. Uh, public access, they would propose on the west shore location to construct a new public parking area, uh, to provide access to current, um, walking paths along the reservoir, if West Newbury approved that. On the east shore, they would look at, um, possibly constructing new off-street public parking on the city parcel. And that would just allow walking along the transmission pipeline, that's not gonna provide access to the current paths along the reservoir. Uh, pump operating head, um, it would have to be higher on the west shore location because they would have to, um, get up above, um, 1, 113 feet elevation on the Cherry Hill, uh, street, um, where that would not be an issue on the eastern location. So in terms of the status of the project, um, right now, the 30% design stage has been completed, uh, we have not seen the documents, I guess those are being reviewed currently by the city. Uh, they just recently received, uh, more than $800,000 federal grant, which has kind of kick-started this, this project again. Uh, I assume it's been an ongoing correspondence with the city officials, um, you know, been invited to some meetings, there was a public presentation to the select board last year. Um, much of this information I'm sharing with you tonight was shared in that presentation. Uh, but we do not feel that West Newbury's had a meaningful, uh, opportunity to have input into the design, evaluation, and planning process. So what are our rights, um, under the Acts of 1908, which gave Newburyport the rights to the water in West Newbury and these reservoirs? Um, the city is allowed to take certain waters and lands, they can erect structures, um, including laying conduits and pipes and so forth, and they may dig up lands to accomplish those two, um, items under the direction of the select board, and that's a quote in, uh, the Board of Selectment is actually what it says in the 1908. Um, and the intent of that is to cause the least hindrance to public travel. If you recall, the yellow pipelines and those plans, that's a lot of West Newbury roadways that are gonna be impacted by this, so this is our one real opportunity to have a say in, um, in what will happen here.
May I have a timeline on this one?
Sure.
I think I saw Jackie somewhere, yeah. He pointed that this out to me, what, six months ago? They have the right to dig, that's also the most valuable real estate in West Newbury. So it's not like you can just let them go ahead and dig, there's definitely significant value added for that, it doesn't address that component.
They have, they do have the right to do it.
Because they have the right to dig, they have the right to put the pipe in, then who owns that real estate at that point? That is a town's property. It does have significant value, especially pertaining to getting to this where they need to be.
Yeah.
I just don't think that point should get forgotten, it should go forward.
Yeah, so that, in the next slide, it kind of addresses, you know, what the next steps are. So, um, we'll, we'll hold on the first bullet, the second bullet, we, we've hired some council to work with us, special, uh, water rights attorneys. Um, they're working with the select board, the Board of Water Commissioners on an IMA as an intermunicipal agreement, um, so that would not only dictate the terms of the pipeline project, but we think that there are other issues at stake, such as the real estate where the pipelines are being laid, um, some kind of guaranteed water supply as well as, um, fair water rate for the water that we purchased from them. And so, um, one of our next steps is to establish a working group from West Newbury that would have a member of the Board of Water Commissioners, a member of the select board, the water superintendent, the town manager, and have hopefully a comparable group, a new report, to try to hammer out the details of this IMA. Uh, the first bullet is that Newburyport is still evaluating this project, they have a lot of other capital water needs, Angus, I don't know if you wanna speak to what you think about the likelihood of this moving forward?
I can, I don't know now, I can certainly if the discussion goes on.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate now, I mean, that's one of the next steps.
Yeah, I mean, this has been one of the biggest, uh, questions that we've had, is, is how real is this project? Because it's, it's real, it's been on their drawing board for some 20 years, and it's definitely something that at a staff level on Newburyport's side is a very high priority for the water superintendent, uh, uh, EPS director and others, uh, but in terms of, uh, level of urgency or when, when it may come to pass, it's, it's very difficult to gauge that. Uh, I do have a meeting with the mayor tomorrow morning, and I do hope to, uh, get a better idea, but to this point, it's been, it's definitely a high priority of the senior staff. Where it rests on the mayor, council, water sewer commission, it's, uh, it's been harder to pin that down. So we did, we've been taking a look through the city's, uh, capital improvements program they presented for this earlier this month. And it includes almost $69 million of, um, uh, uh, funding requests just for water capital projects, not citywide, not sewer, uh, just water. And by way of comparison, their current outstanding debt, uh, the entire city for water is just under $12 million. So obviously, they're not going to do everything on their list or anything close to that, so I know from, you know, conversations we've had with, uh, you know, with their staff, they're, the staff are really trying to push the elected officials to say, okay, there's all these things that are being talked about. They're all important, what's the relative importance, and really trying to get to what, what are the priorities and what's actually gonna happen? I, I took a look at the, uh, capital program in the city that's currently, uh, you know, going through this, the normal annual reviews for the city council, and that's got five-year, um, you know, funding projections of, of what they're actually gonna fund, and it includes FY '25, $800,000 towards Phase One of the, uh, what they're calling the Indian Hill Rock, Rock Water Pipeline, that $800,000, as you mentioned, that's a federal earmark, that's not their local money. So, yes, it's money, but they haven't actually appropriated local funding toward it, which I think is something of a barometer of, uh, you know, until they do that, we, that's kind of why we're, we scratch our heads a little bit in terms of where this rests with the mayor and council in terms of their priorities. And I think we'll learn more about that, you know, this, their, as their budget cycle goes forward. The only other funding that their five-year capital program is including is an amount in FY '28 of, of about 200, it's extra, $281,295. I haven't been able to find anything in their capital documents explaining exactly, and that's a very precise number.
Yeah.
So there's obviously something behind that, but when you look at the, uh, kind of, uh, uh, summary sheets, they've, they're talking about the project in two phases, uh, they're talking about a phase one with, uh, uh, FY '25 costs of $800,000, that's true, obviously for the engineering permitting, and it's showing, um, and this is showing in FY '27, $6.3 million for construction costs, but in terms of the funding source for that, uh, that's not in their funding plan, that's what it would cost, or that's what they're projecting it would cost, if they did it in FY '27, but that's very different, as we've seen from the Middle Street Bridge, we've seen capital programs from the city that included hundreds of thousands of dollars for the Middle Street Bridge in specific years, but when we look to say, is that real money? No, that's just the capital program says, that doesn't mean it's appropriated. So they're showing 6.3 million and a total of 7.1 million cost for the, uh, Phase One of the project and then Phase Two of the project. Uh, they're showing a total price tag of 17.29 million, so you add those up, it's, you know, $25 million. And I'll just re- restate, their total outstanding debt for all their water capital projects is just short of $12 million. And the total bottom line of all of the water projects that have been presented to their council this cycle is $69 million. So they have a lot of very difficult decisions to make, so it's very good for us to be, you know, we wanna be fully engaged in the process and understand, you know, what they're doing, but from where I sit, that's one of the big questions, is how, you know, is this something that is a five-year project, a 10-year project, or a 20-year project? Uh, and, and I don't have the answer.
You don't know?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll see what I get from the meeting with the mayor tomorrow, but I don't expect to get an answer, because he doesn't, he doesn't know either, you know, he's one part of the government. Um, they've got their council, they got the water sewer, and I do know from the, at a staff level over there, they're they're really trying to push their water and sewer commission because they, they, they're the subject matter experts, and they want them to really set a clear, uh, you know, ranking priority. So, and, but, you know, when you look at their other uh, projects, you know, you're seeing PPOS treatment plants, uh, you know, um, and there's a lot of big-ticket items.
Yeah, there are other things in the Mount Water Master Plan, the Bartlett ponds, um, treatment and.
Yeah, that are, that are quite important, objectively important, so they have, you know, they, just like any budgeting process, um, budgeting is managing scarcity, they, they, they have, they wanna do this, they can only afford this, that's, that's what the pitching process is, so.
Okay, I think that gives some perspective.
Yeah, and, and I guess the one final point, we, we just learned this today, there's a agenda posted for next Thursday with the Water and Sewer Commission where, uh, one of just. with their water and sewer commission where, uh, one of just two agenda items is the water rates. Uh, so we notified the water department earlier today. Uh, but I think there's a, you know, we would certainly infer from that that there's a good probability they'll be voting, uh, new water rates next Thursday. I think that'd be a good meeting to keep an eye on because I assume it's going to include some significant discussion of what projects they actually intend to go forward within near term timeframe.
Uh, so I guess the final bullet is just that we'll, we'll continue to advocate for West Newbury to have a seat at the table as design and decisions are made from this point forward. Any comments or questions?
Question?
Yeah.
So when you refer to the water master plan, are you referring to something that's more recent than the master plan they did twenty years ago?
Yes. The Thai bond referenced, um, I, I can give you the date of it, but.
Okay. So they have something that's, uh, their water master plan is more recent?
Yes.
Okay, I'd love to have that, so.
Yeah, it's on their website, but yeah, we can send you the link.
Oh, no, I'll find it. It's on the website. I'll go and find it. I just didn't realize that they have done it on the one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jack?
Uh, my name is Jack Tugan. I'm a water commissioner in town, but, um, I'm also a resident and, and quite honestly, the majority of my, um, things that I'd like to share with you, I come from being a resident that enjoys the town, but there is an aspect of the water department that I'll, I'll also talk about as well. As you mentioned, AECOM for Newbury Port, they have a presentation in September, September eighteenth, I think it was twenty twenty three, West Newbury Select Board Meeting. Uh, this is the last time any design details of the project have been shared with West Newbury, to the best of my knowledge, in terms of public access. Since that time, Newbury Port has received over eight hundred thousand dollars in funding from the federal government. That would be Senator Markey's and Senator Warren's, uh, uh, help to get that funding uh, to further design detailed plans. And as you mentioned, they've completed the thirty percent design, which as an engineer uh, tells me, they, they pretty much finished their conceptual design and they have their preferred alternatives. Um, also since that time, Newbury Port has received a permit from the Conservation Commission and they've gone ahead and drilled boreings in their preferred pump station location, which is Wilton Street. Um, I think it's reasonable to assume that the additional engineering design will be used to further these design detailed plans. And they're just, you know, uh, going further down the road and it's hard to slow up their momentum, regardless of whether they have the current budget funding or not. We've heard at a recent Newbury Port meeting for the dam, that they are aggressively seeking external funding. And so they may be continuing to talk to the state legislature and the federal government to get, uh, several million dollars and all of a sudden this project comes front and center again. So I, I'd like to note that, um, the presentation by AECOM in September of twenty twenty three has a slide which you referred to, uh, listing, uh, what AECOM has identified as the evaluation criteria for the two sites and the pipeline directions. It, with all respect, you referred to, this is what Newbury Port has identified as alternatives. And, and it comes from AECOM, who's working for Newbury Port to identify the alternatives. Nothing in the September meeting, nothing at the recent meeting that, that was regarding the dam has invited or engaged us to be partners in this process. And it's on West Newbury. You know, they own the reservoirs, so. So, um, there are several, there was only one criteria and that was West Newbury approval. And, and I just think that one bullet, in that one bullet, there are several significant details that fall under that category that deserve to be evaluated with at least equal weight to the other listed criteria. Most of the evaluation criteria that AECOM presented are Newbury Port centered. Um, cost, security, access, et cetera. The evaluation criteria listed, whether intentionally or not, as a resident of West Newbury, demonstrates a lack of sensitivity to West Newbury interests. Um, and I think they need to be, uh, explored, identified, shared with Newbury Port, so that if there's a non-starter alternative, you know, we're doing them a favor by saying that's just not going to fly. So this, these would be, I believe, some of the criteria. Aesthetic impact. Aesthetic impact of the pump station affecting the view of the artichoke basin watershed at Wilton Street. The water might be Newbury Port's by active legislation and not the will of the town or approval of the town. And that was in nineteen oh eight. And a lot of other legislation and, and, uh, issues and priorities in, in, uh, home, uh, rule of, of property of the town uh, has come into place since then. So I think some things have changed, maybe not everything. And I would refer to, uh, why do I pay Newbury with, but the landforms and the scenic character is West Newbury's. And it has nothing to do with water. That is the watershed basin, the aesthetics, the views, the open space. And I would refer to Alyssa Grammer's recent research on what the artichoke uh, watershed used to look like and how valued it was before the legislature took it away from the city. And I would also refer to, I believe, a recent Park and Rec survey that asked the town, what are they valuing, residents, what are they valuable of the town? And, and one of the leading reasons was the rural character. And this is, this project threatens that in some form if we're not proactive.
Yeah, that, that was the open space recreation plan.
Open space, right, right. So, um, another thing that is, has really not been mentioned is noise. And wherever this pump station is located, it will degrade the open space quality. I mean, uh, and, and that's a big issue. I mean, the, the argument might be, okay, it won't be above, say, eighty decibels. But that's quite a tranquil space that, that is enjoyed by hikers and birders. And anything above background is going to degrade that space, whether it's on the east shore or west shore or some other location. Permanent easements under West Newbury roads. You know, uh, I think we should be proactive on it. You know, what's the upside and downside of sharing this town-owned infrastructure, the roads with someone else? What does that mean to the future? You know, unthinkable things may happen in the future, new reasons to have cables or other things. Um, it, it, it has, it, it has implications to, uh, uh, maybe this is um, my opinion, but not necessarily technically true. Has implications to our operation and maintenance of our infrastructure in the future. It potentially impacts that, let alone the, the construction inconveniences. And, and, and again, this goes to their priorities in their evaluation criteria. Why hasn't minimizing roadway use for pipelines been identified as an evaluation criterion? Or make that a requirement? Why can't we require that? Not see what their engineer says. Where will required three-phase power come from? That's not mentioned. Does that mean new telephone calls? Does that further degrade this, the scenic view? Uh, can we dictate that anything needs to be on the ground? In terms of any utility servicing, any of these, any pump stations or other facilities? I think there should be, and you referred to that and, and we've talked about it in the water commission, some upfront discussion about guaranteed access to water at a reasonable rate. The town of Newbury, they get water from Newbury Port, they pay retail, but they also have their infrastructure provided for by Newbury Port. We maintain our infrastructure, we still pay retail. And, you know, uh, there, there, I think Angus has mentioned this before, there's no guarantee of future access to this water. Um, although it was strongly implied at the time of the, the land taking, it, it was only after, you know, nineteen eighty four, when the TCE plume occurred in, in Groveland that, you know, we were permitted to get water from Newbury Port. And, um, and, uh, you know, the other thing about why West Newbury deserves consideration for rates is the watershed is part of their infrastructure by legislative act. We protect it through, um, road design, through Conservation Commission, through Board of Health, and other forms of government. Shouldn't we, you know, uh, get some sort of recognition for that and benefit from Newbury Port for that? There's been no mention of that in this whole process. Not, not at least in the public sector. Maybe, maybe in meetings there has been. But if anything, you know, the, um, the Thai bond report, which is part of the master plan, implies that we're responsible for their water quality degradation. And, you know, that, that lower, those lower artichokes are, uh, are loaded with sediment and that's a source of nutrients and that's a source of water degradation. Um, and if, if you're, if you're going to focus on water quality from some finite sources in West Newbury, I, I, I think that's the wrong approach that, uh, a consideration that is being, being given to West Newbury. So, um, West Newbury needs to be at least a partner in this whole project process rather than reacting when they get the funding to Newbury Port's plans and at Newbury Port's pace. DEP talks about regionalization all the time. This is not a Newbury Port issue. This is a Newbury Port, West Newbury issue. This is a regional water issue. Uh, getting federal funding without West Newbury being part of that process or seeking, um, uh, lightening, lightened wetlands regulations in order for their water projects to go through. This is not a local project uh, with a private entity. This is, this is a, a regionalization. This is a regional issue. I believe that, uh, the town of West Newbury should be actively engaged with our federal legislators and our state legislators about this project in a proactive way and perhaps even seek funding from state and federal level so that we can do our assessment to evaluate our highest valued priorities, uh, in an equal manner if, if it's not going to be a shared project. West Newbury would be well served to do a study to develop evaluation criteria based on open space, roadways, wetlands, water, construction disturbance, et cetera, from Newbury's, from West Newbury's and not Newbury Port's perspective. And, um, and, and a fundamental thing, uh, that is an example is why are we considering two pump station locations? Aren't there more? I mean, they're basically going to be pumping water from the lower artichokes up, uh, up to the, the reservoir and then pumping it back down. Or, or letting it flow by gravity. I mean, aren't there alternative locations between the reservoirs that might be more suitable locations? That won't affect the aesthetics and won't affect, uh, our, our access and enjoyment of that area? I mean, that, that watershed was compromised by the acts of the legislation without our approval. And now it's going to be further compromised and we're a hundred and sixteen years down the road. Don't you think that we have a little more clout at this point? To dictate or strongly recommend, you know, what this regional project is going to be? And, uh, I think I, I, I think that's, that's all I wanted to say, except, I, I think the select board, um, I, I want to thank them for, for doing this and sharing this with the public. Um, I think you've been super cooperative with this and it's, um, and, and I'm hoping that, as you mentioned, there, there would be a, a subcommittee to look at this. But I also would recommend we engage some of the other entities in town to participate in this as well. Um, because of the, the aesthetic and scenic values of the open space that's, you know, is, is, is threatened in this case. That's all I have.
Right, exactly.
Very true.
And he, um,
I just play a little bit. Sure. I just appreciate that we articulated it because we feel, well, at least I feel many of the same frustrations you have. Shout out why you we've got to be on an active play, but you said it very well and I want to say thank you for doing that.
Just to clarify, so when you refer to the master plan, you're talking about Thai bond watershed protection plan?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not really a master plan, would say, but.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very focused and doesn't get into some of the stuff that their master plan twenty years ago did. So for instance, a major focus of that plan advised them how to gain additional water for their use included deepening the reservoirs, which would also go a long way towards dealing with, yeah.
That is one of the things that was evaluated as part of this whole project. And I didn't mention that the pipeline route that's shown on that map, um, that was one of six alternatives that were evaluated. I don't know yet if they looked at other pump station locations as part of that.
I don't think so. No, I mean, I saw what they had early on, six locations and then pretty clear very quickly that the two
Right.
that they're now, you know, the ones, the only ones that made sense.
Wow, yeah. There was also in that presentation, uh, slide that showed, um, power supply creation of pump station. I, I didn't include that, but, um, that's something that's available. I can send that to you, yeah. The thing I, I just wanted to mention is that, that the nineteen oh eight acts, Newbury is also included in that. They have far more rights under that than West Newbury does, so. Can't say why. I don't think it's right, but that's the way it is. Can we take these? Who first? Uh, Dan or Patricia?
Um, hi, it's Patricia Reeser and, um, a couple of things. One, I just wondered if, um, when Newbury Port was considering where along the West Newbury town-owned land the building would be located, um, they didn't consider moving it, uh, say farther north, I guess, uh, where it would not impact the view shed quite as much. And, um, number two, I, I just wanted to second, um, some of Jack's statements that this property was acquired by the town of West Newbury in order to preserve that view shed. Um, so the value to the town may be um, at least as much, if not more than the fair market value, um, of the property. Um, and I, I know the select board's well aware of this, um, but I just couldn't go without saying it.
Thank you.
At, at, you know, the early meetings with, that were on site with Newbury Port, I made that point and although I was only one person speaking for, you know, for West Newbury and had no, no authority other than one person's voice, I emphasized that that land had been purchased in large part for its view shed and I think that land was preserved for conservation and is probably subject to Article, Article nine seven.
I guess it's the same.
So, yeah, so. Right, yeah, so, so, um, for you know, Newbury Port certainly has has to consider that in a significant way. That's, that's a big hurdle and, and, um, yeah, that's it.
yeah, that's it.
Rob, you?
No, I, I just, this goes a little bit to, to D E Q, we have a water supply and cooperation with Newbury Port. But, um, it was clear from the master plan done twenty or so years ago that the authors were really trying to get them to improve the reservoir. And I don't see any of that in here, and some of the work they do might prevent them from improving the reservoir. And the significance to us is they still argue that they have to get away from supplying us with water because they're fearful of running out of water, even though twenty years ago they were told they had the ability to access a lot more water than they've done. I just, along with Jack's comments, I, I, I see them as being a little short sighted in, in whether change, you know, or not.
Yeah, there's, I, I think there's a hole in their logic, and I'm sure they've thought this through a lot, but it seems to me that there's a hole in the logic in that. The watershed that serves the Indian Hill Reservoir is actually quite small. Particularly as compared to the, um, the upper and lower artichoke reservoirs. And so there's a lot more capture area for the, for the artichoke reservoirs as opposed to the Indian Hill Reservoir, and, um, if they, so if those reservoir waters are compromised, whether it be because they're shallow and they have algae blooms, or because there's manganese or iron, or because there's backflow from the Meramec River that contaminates it either with C S O's or with the salt water, that water no longer is available because it's been contaminated, so. Um, you know, sort of to what you were saying, it strikes me that they really should be focused, uh, I don't, I don't deny that what they're looking at here, the pipeline has value, but I really think they should be thinking seriously about protecting the lower reservoirs, because that's the major part of the capture area. If they lose that, then who cares how much you have, storage you have, if you don't have anything to put in storage?
I also just wanted to comment on the Acts of nineteen oh eight, that was a long time ago, but as part of the special council that we had looking at this, they, they completely evaluated that and what potential West Newbury had to try to make changes in that, and there's not much. I agree with that.
It's, they're not hopeful about that.
Yeah, so it's not off the table, but, you know, that's not, and, and I know when I was on the Board of Water Commissioners, there was a big push to, you know, this isn't right, we should be able to fight it, and, you know, it's, it's been brought up several times, and it's pretty challenging. We're not the only town in this situation, which doesn't make it any better, but there were several other communities, uh, were impacted by these kinds of acts, you know, back in the early part of the century, the nineteen hundreds. Any other comments, people in the audience, or?
Uh, I have one, I think it might be helpful just to talk a little bit more about the I M A, and kind of what, what process was followed, where we are, it's, uh, so, basically, this, uh, first came, kind of came to our attention in the fall of twenty twenty-two, I think it was probably October. Uh, and the board at that time moved very quickly to engage special counsel, uh, to get, you know, to make sure we had someone with a contract who was really specialized in water rate, rates, uh, went through, uh, R F B process, interviewed, I think, six or seven firms, and, uh, ended up contracting with what was Stan Myers, Harrington, now Harrington Deep, Avery, and, uh, they were, I think that contract was signed in, uh, late December twenty twenty-two, and part of their initial work, we uploaded a whole bunch of information, background information from both the town and the city, uh, to get them working. And then we had met, uh, individually with members of the Select Board, and as well as the Water Commission, uh, myself and the, the Water Superintendent, just to get kind of get up to speed on what the interests were. And, uh, that basically resulted, there was a memo from March twenty twenty-three, uh, that was, uh, written based on all that was received from both the Select Board and the Water Commission at that point, and that was basically to do with what would even, uh, for an intermunicipal agreement, what would be the must haves, want to have, it would be nice to have, but not necessarily like field breakers. And so that was put together, it was circulated to the Water Commission and the Select Board. Uh, I, I know it does represent the Select Board's position, the Water Commission did receive a copy and was asked, is this accurately reflected, and it was discussed at at least one or two meetings, and it certainly seems like it did accurately and completely capture, and that's where some of the points that were made earlier, that it's, it's all in there. That doesn't mean there's an agreement, but, but there is a document that exists that sets out all of the towns' kind of must haves, want to have, be nice to have, so. Um, one of the challenges that we have had and continue to have is that is getting to where the town of West Newbury can speak with one voice on this, and I think the suggestion of a working group and Jack's suggestion to broaden that, I think is great, because I think the more that we as a community can speak with one voice in dealing with the city, is going to be really helpful, uh, but, you know, on the other side, um, there, there are many headed monster too, so to speak. Uh, you know, the mayor can't speak for the city, the council can't speak for the city, certainly the D P S director and the city engineer and the water superintendent, they can't speak for the city, the water sewer commission. So I, I do know they're really undertaking us, at least at staff level, uh, trying to get to where they, they'll never speak with one voice, it's a complex city, uh, former government, but, uh, but that's one of the challenges of getting an intermunicipal agreement. One thing we did get clear with, uh, with our special counsel very, very early in the process, because it was a material issue for us, is who would actually need to be a signatory to an intermunicipal agreement that would be binding in West Newbury? And that would be the Select Board, and it would be the Water Commission, to the extent that there's things, uh, that would be party, you know, part of the terms, such as water rates, water volume, that is squarely in the authority of the Water Commission, whereas other things like roads and, uh, you know, some of the oversight that the nineteen oh act, or nineteen oh eight act applies to the Select Board is, uh, the Select Board's authority, not the Water Commission's. It's very important and necessary for both of those bodies. It's, and it'd be ideally everyone agrees, but those are, at the end of the day, those are the two bodies that have to agree and sign on the dotted line. Uh, we don't know the answer in the city of Newbury Port. Uh, we know it would be the mayor and council, because under state laws, very clear, they would have to sign an intermunicipal agreement. We don't actually know that their water and sewer commission have to agree, we think they do, because of their role and rate setting, but, but we've kind of made it clear in our discussions with the city, that's not our question to answer, that's their question to answer. We've put in time and resources to, to get our own side organized, uh, they've got to do the same thing, and us, uh, it has been a little frustrating, because it's, it's not been clear who can speak for the city, and that's where, you know, when I outlined earlier, you know, we don't know sitting here today, you know, what, what is, uh, you know, this, this body's priority versus the city as a whole, so. Uh, anyhow, I just wanted to kind of just set that out for people who, who, you know, wouldn't have, wouldn't have known that, even though I saw, talked about public meetings. Now, I almost freaking out a minute, uh, but I guess my point is, there is a March twenty twenty-three document that sets out what a town, you know, would require and would, would want to achieve from that, so. We have talked to special counsel more recently in the last several months about what about just going ahead and drawing up an I M A, like a more formal document and sending that to them, and you know, to this point, that hasn't happened for really two reasons, I think, uh, the advice is that would be a bit premature, because until there's some engagement, some more meaningful engagement, some agreement in principle to at least define the parameters of what's on the table for negotiation, it would be, the advice is, it would be a little premature to, to go to like, here's this twenty page legalistic intermunicipal agreement, if you don't even have conceptual agreement on, for instance, that water rates are on the table. From our point of view, they absolutely need to be on the table, but, but that's not yet, then, we can't get a, a clear answer on that. Uh, and secondly, the Middle Street Bridge, I, you know, we're, we're in the thick of that, and after, you know, five and a half years, and so, um, and that has its own dynamics and its own complexities, and that's more at like the maybe not the five yard line, maybe the seven yard line, but it's like, it's very close, there's years of history, there's years of process, and we're at the eleventh hour with that, with the, with the council and the mayor, you know, in the next six to eight weeks in their budget season, and this, this calendar year, we have to have that project under contract this calendar year for very specific reasons, or that they kind of become, that becomes a real problem, so that has been, uh, you know, for a lot of reasons, uh, you know, I think the idea of like, joining those together, it would just collapse under its own weight, because each of them are so individually, uh, complex, both practically and politically. Uh, so I just wanted to provide that context, uh, for those who, uh, you know, might not have that information. And I don't know if Patricia raised your hand again, or if that's still from the old.
Anything else?
It was again. Um, yeah, sorry, so, I, I know you were talking about not knowing what the, um, who you're dealing with, or who you need to deal with on the Newbury Port side, but am I correct in thinking that any agreement, uh, by the town of West Newbury to sell, um, the, uh, the parcel of land on the west side would require a two thirds town meeting vote?
Yes.
Yeah, and it might even be beyond that, where it's subject to a C R. I, I mean, to me, that's like, not even like, if they're including that, and they're, that's, in, in my opinion, that's kind of ignorant for them to even put into their, you know, that's probably written by an engineer who doesn't really recognize this country restriction, that's not, that's, I don't even think that's in the cards, I, and I do think in, in my discussions with, uh, with the, you know, with the staff over there, I think a parameter they're thinking about for the west side is that it would need to be entirely on land that is currently under their control.
Yes, that was my understanding, um, prior to this presentation, um, I, and, and, but these are conversations over a year ago, where, um, the way they were speaking about it at that point is that anything done would be on, uh, Newbury Port, so, you know, city of Newbury Port land, but I don't know if that's realistic, I, I, I don't know how wide the band is that they have.
Yeah, it's not very wide, I mean, it says it means the wire, so.
Right.
All right.
This is, maybe it's a silly question, but has have our local representatives weighed in on this, uh, Bank You Know It Act, is there any, is there any possibility of amendment or change to that that legislation, and anything would have been done on that end?
Seems to me like we had a preliminary discussion with Senator Char about this, but, um, but I would instantly fall off the line, yeah.
Yeah, it could be very complicated, but.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I wouldn't say it's been, it's been, you know.
Since it's so one sided, it might be worth figuring out, and we'll see if you find someone who sees it the same way as being one sided and sort of unfair um, to us, and, and like, help.
Yeah, but it would, you know, be a politically fraught issue, you know, for, say, for our senator who is also Newbury Port senator, and a representative, that would be different than that.
You, you referenced a C R on the west side parcel, is there a C R on that parcel, and so who holds that C R?
I think the C R is on the Greenville land.
That's on the east side.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said on the western.
On the western.
I, oh.
Do you have that?
On the we, on the West Newbury own land?
Yeah.
You don't think there's a C R on it?
I don't know, it's a question.
No, I think there is, I, I distinctly remember calling it, and because it does specifically identify view shed protection as one of the conservation values it's protecting, uh, I'm, I'm ninety-five percent sure.
It would be just interesting to know, who holds it, maybe the Conservation Commission? Um, because it can't, if you, Tom owns it, it has to be held by somebody else, so I think that's an important thing to clarify much.
Yeah, I guess. But, hey, Rees, we bought it, I don't recall that component of the conservation restriction at all. It could have happened after that timeframe, but with that committee, that wasn't part of our conversation at the time.
Patricia might remember, but I don't remember, I do remember that it was
Issues on the front.
For view shed protection, but I'm not sure it was codified in any way.
I know the neighbors up the hill even have the right to clear the land if it impedes on the view shed.
Yeah, there you go, okay, yeah, no, yeah, like, that could be, it's showing on the maps, it's just town, it's the land, so.
That's what I, I would think.
Yeah.
May, maybe what I remember seeing, because I do remember seeing, you know, some kind of legal document, maybe it was the, maybe it was the town meeting vote, or the deed, or something, but.
We'll get to that.
Oh, it's technical, it's technical, C R. Not long. I think that's what everyone's, right? Good question to ask.
Is it, or is it better to keep it in the town's property, you just want to check on that before you
Yeah.
encumber it some other fashion that might be less advantageous?
Patricia, is your hand still up?
Uh, no, it's up again, sorry, um, yeah, so I'm, I would be grateful but surprised if there's a C R on this parcel, because, um, Annie, I think this was one of the pieces that we acquired with the land bond. Uh, and I think the land bond could be used for any municipal purpose. Um, so, without looking at the deed, um, I remember that we had the obligation to clear shrubbery over a certain height uh, that was below the two lots that was sold to the developer, but other than that, I'm not sure, I'd be very grateful if Chapter ninety-seven applied, however.
We'll definitely look into that. Chapter ninety-seven is not very strong protection, not if that's, it's it was all the law down.
By the legislature.
Yeah, it would slow things down, really.
Right, it, it's something, and I, I think it entitles us to have a replacement property, does it not?
It does, yes.
Before permanent ecological and financial failure.
Any other questions or comments on this topic?
I have one, it may not be my name, but it's a particular conversation, but I've noticed Newbury Port has surveyed all of the dikes around the bottom side of the dam. Are they planning on raising that by a significant amount?
That's been discussed, it's not currently in the works, um, but, you know, as part of the project that they're doing to increase the elevation of the spillway, that might have been part of what you're saying.
Okay, the reason I understand your question is if they go up three to four feet, they could possibly flood our well field, and West Newbury would have absolutely no water that's contaminated.
Right, I think that's what Jack's point about a regional approach, that's why I'm feeling important, because they're not, they're not acting in isolation, it's going to work.
I understood it was a cease and desist order on that, but I've noticed they've been outpour drilling, and they've put up flags and all kinds of posts.
A cease and desist order?
That's what I heard, I'm not sure.
That was on the, the button's permit, right?
Uh, that was on, yeah, and that was, I think, to do with the overspill and the fact that they had not gone to natural heritage, I believe.
Yeah.
There was a permit that they needed, that they didn't get, and they were, there was a temporary cease and desist. It was, it was lifted within a matter of a couple, I think even like a week.
Yeah.
But yeah, there was a cease and desist issue.
Consider loading a bond to protect that well field? So if something does happen, then we can give reparations, put in a new one in another location?
You're saying if the, if the elevation of the dam was increased in a way that negatively.
Right.
So at this point, that, that is, that idea is one that the city's talked about, the city engineer talked about it at the meeting, uh, you know, a month or so ago. It's been talked about for, he's been talking about it for years. It, it does show up in their capital program as a long term project, they have not initiated any permitting on that, of, of any kind, they, uh, we looked for whether there was anything filed with, uh, like, uh, M I P A on that, the Mass Environmental Protection Act, there's no project number, there's no anything, so. That's another one that, and he said it very clearly at the, at the public meeting, that if it was up to him, he'd
Right.
increase it ten feet. That's the city engineer.
Exactly.
Yeah, whether, where, where that, uh, fits within the, um, city's priorities, we don't know, but certainly the town has vested, uh, interests and rights,
Right.
both with regard to the well field, as well as the, uh, Quaker Cemetery, and other town, uh, property interests that would be affected, and so we would, we have absolute standing on notice and all of that, so there hasn't been any, anything formal that they've done on that.
So my understanding of the city engineer's thoughts on raising the dam, um, was not to raise the, well, I'm, I'm sure there's various levels of, of conversation, but as I've read it, was not to raise the level of the reservoir of, of the water within the reservoir, but instead to provide additional protection, longer term protection to the reservoir. you know, of of the water within the reservoir, but instead to provide additional protection, longer term protection to the reservoir from rise of sea level and from flooding events. Um so the current spillway height is almost exactly at the current FEMA hundred year um flood level. Um and um what they want to do is to gain additional protection there, but even then it doesn't accommodate um you know, the reality of sea level rise or further flooding events in the future. So you know, their their the discussion so far, at least, I think a new report has not centered on actually raising the level of the reservoir as opposed to raising the protection of the reservoir from water levels outside the reservoir in in, you know, in um high tide um uh sea level rise events and flood events. And the way that they were thinking about getting additional volume in the reservoir, one idea at least was to dredge the reservoir to so that they get um could maintain the same level or essentially the same level, but reservoir would be deeper. And then they have better protection from things like algae worms because of water which they collect.
But the overarching point is we got to keep an eye on whatever they're working towards because of the impact it might have.
That's right. We could lose all of the water that we consider our own natural source gone. Then what do we do? Build a desalinization plant, pump out of the ocean?
I mean, we we do think, yeah, I I don't want to in any way diminish that concern because it's a very real concern, but I, no, I understand, but I I do think that there's no way that Mast DEP would ever allow that to happen. I think if they're, that's just my opinion. You can disagree, but I I absolutely do not think Mast DEP would permit a project in the city of Newbury Port that was going to uh take West Newbury's well out of contention. I mean, that's part of the permitting process with MEPA and DEP and so forth. That does not in any way mean we shouldn't be paying attention or we shouldn't be absolutely like.
That was all my comment was, we got to pay attention.
Yeah, but there there are, you know, there are protections within the permitting process. Um and there's just no way the EP would would allow that. Doesn't mean we shouldn't be worried about it, but it's not something they can just go and do without like going through years of permitting and we would have absolute standing to appeal and.
And just thought it was appropriate time.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you all for participating. Appreciate the input and stay tuned. We'll report back and you can find out.
One thing we have talked about, we we weren't, you know, weren't able to put it together for today, but just for those who are who are here, we do have a town on the website. There's a town projects uh page where we do uh it's linked right here. It's actually in a couple of places. There's a box here, town projects, and it's also where from the home box um where we've kind of highlighted, you know, a dozen or fifteen of the kind of higher profile initiatives. Uh you know, to put up like more detailed information. We haven't put one up for this yet. Uh but Wendy and I did talk earlier this week, we'd like to do that. Uh and that way we can take all these documents that have been talked about and just calculate that. And that way, as as this does go forward, new information becomes available, we can give residents an easy way to stay current. Uh you know, it does become a a staffing challenge, like it takes obviously time to build this out and then it takes a lot of time to maintain it. So that's part of why we you know, I don't want to over promise, but we can definitely build it out. We can definitely populate it and stop. Keeping it current is sometimes uh a little tougher because we put a lot of our resources toward the board package and keeping them current, but to also post it here, we just, you know, we yeah, we do the best we can with the hours we have.
Right. Um I did look in the open space and recreation plan and um those two parcels were not protected.
Yeah, it's just general news.
Yeah.
Could they be pickled upwards?
Perhaps. Okay.
Every part of you.
I'm annoyed. Should we go back to the other?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, she's here.
I know. Judy's not.
Rob, I think she can be in person.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I I will.
Yeah.
I continue getting along the sun.
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha.
I am retired.
All right, we'll move on to um item D. No.
EC.
EC, request for appointment of community. Um, you're holding. So you live on the pond?
Yes, I live at six twenty three.
And how many?
I mean, since October.
Nice.
So we're very excited. And um it just, it's our backyard and I'm thrilled to be able we feel very fortunate that that's our backyard now. And so we're very interested in in its future and all the concerns. I've always been a community person that volunteers and gets involved in different committees, so it makes sense that this one could be the one from here.
Great. I think you were on Zoom on a couple of the meetings.
Yes, yes.
Any questions? Go ahead.
How long is the appointment for? Is it a member or associate member? Is there an opening soon? All full membership.
But this would be reappointed in June?
Yes.
And hence the Milpon Committee, they consulted on it and then we've got some.
Well, I I don't know if they consulted. I don't know if it's discussed at meeting I attended. Did you get any input from?
Usually if there's negative, it could happen here.
Yeah. Um she could just been.
To the Milpon Committee as an associate member, uh guess if it's what, June thirtieth of this year?
Yeah. Oh, I'll second. I'll do a question. Yeah. And so I I guess, I mean, it's, I think it's positive, but just an observation. So um I guess not a majority, but close close to half of the members will now be people who live on Milpon, which is probably good thing because you can keep your eye on what's going on.
Right, yeah.
And other than earlier, that's a pretty good idea, right?
Right, right.
The white dogs right out there.
Right.
So um so this is just through the end of this fiscal year and then all of the appointments will be updated.
Okay, so you're saying that's until June of this year?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but then basically the reappointment process, unless there's someone who doesn't want to be reappointed, uh typically the the board is presented with the entire slate, those members to all vote at once. So uh it's not an individual reappointment. Your your name would be on a list for reappointment.
Okay.
But it's just a one year.
Yeah, if you want to be reappointed.
I see.
And after a month, you don't want to.
This right now is for basically a month and then then for a year.
Yeah.
Come back and talk to us.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, let's see. We completed C. Um item D, board commissioner committee updates. Um capital improvements committee questionnaire. I see Judy out there. Stone hole.
Oh, okay, yeah. Maybe maybe let that run its course.
Okay, all right. So progress updates, sawmill land management or plan. Building draft science. So that was a document that Michelle was circulating along the parties that in the working group.
Yeah. Yeah, it's uh.
Pretty close.
We are. Yeah, I mean, the the board knows this, that it might, the information might not yet have gone out to the broader public, so it's it's worth noting at this point that, you know, we did get some very, you know, very unfortunate news for the town. Um on Tuesday, we got a a notice of uh uh separation service from a conservation agent. She's given a phenomenal opportunity in the private sector. Um and uh she's really loved working for the town, but uh she will only be with us for another two and a half weeks. So um this, you know, this uh has to be done by the end of June and it will be, uh but just for those who might not know that, that's uh you know, it's probably a good time to bring that up. So she's been uh really the quarterback on taking the the draft plan to the stage that it is now, but that's something that you mentioned earlier in the meeting about a lot of deadlines between now and June thirtieth, that um sawmill management plan is an absolute requirement. Does that be done providing the state ahead of June thirtieth as part of our uh requirements for the grant?
In order to receive the grant funding.
Correct, correct.
So the transaction has already been made since December fifteenth.
Yeah, we closed on that.
So all we're trying to do is capture that grant.
Yeah, just just the three hundred ninety four thousand.
Just just that.
A good week's paid.
So um either of you have any input on the, I mean, there are a couple um editorial things that I devoted to Michelle.
She had a bottom sign of the privilege of.
Yeah.
I think it should be all the parties that had the funding. That was the result of that. They did mention exclusion of e-bikes on them, which I thought was good.
Yeah.
Other than that.
Does the exclusion of, I know there was somewhere to the e bike exclusion, but does that has that been challenged? You know, challenged elsewhere?
I'm aware of, we can't restrict. What what are the acronyms for?
OPDMD.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's not.
Yes, it's not. Then other powered mobility devices. Yeah, yeah.
It's like planned by e bike and this wheelchair.
Beyond wheelchairs. Yeah, yes.
Okay, so any further comments?
I I had no response.
Great. Um next item, Judy, you're here. We'll move on to the CIC mini or the CIC questionnaire. And then updates from the recent meeting. Want to do those first or?
Actually, I thought the questionnaire really did a nice job of of capturing a lot of the, I thought the last meeting was terrific, a lot of really good discussion about uh the committee, the the bylaw, the policy, state best practices, how how, you know, how the process works. And uh you know, it's a a real commitment made to looking over the course of the next several months at potential refinements that could make it uh, you know, even even more efficient and effective. So I thought the questionnaire that the committee put together did a nice job of kind of reflecting all of that.
Any questions? I mean, you're right. Yeah. Um I did have one question on, let's see, so this is on the charge. Um the cost over twenty thousand dollars, is that, are you, did you discuss maybe increasing that? This is part of the threshold for capital projects?
We did not discuss anything last week, but we're needing this month to go over the witness test and start talking about um the definitions in in the bylaws.
Okay.
That that was something, where did I, Jim, you and I exchanged um something on that um at one point and and uh so I I assumed that the number hadn't changed. I I did just a quick math and it assumed that the number hadn't changed since the um bylaw, the capital improvements committee bylaw and had been created.
No, it hasn't.
Yeah, well, it has, yeah, it had. So I did, uh you know, sort of compilation of um uh CPI um or uh you know, an aggregation of CPI increases um for the last, since the last change. And it brought the number up to um a little under thirty thousand dollars. And the question is, you know, does, did it make sense? You know, what frequency do we want to change those numbers? And was this time, that that was what I recall from what we traded.
So the the state has changed its example when it it outlines best practices. It it used to be twenty, now they have it at twenty five to reach points. So moving it up makes a lot of sense all the time.
Um and then has there been discussion about whether to include engineering studies in the kind of SOFT, you know, in the capital projects?
Well, that is one of the items that is in the key of awareness, what we're going to be reviewing.
Okay.
We have, it's it's been heard.
Yeah, okay.
No reservation.
But it's it's being discussed.
Yeah.
Great. And then my my final question, um one of the comments you may have been select board town manager better support is coordinating with the finance committee so we're not um referencing efforts. Do you have any thoughts about how to do that?
Well, perhaps meeting, um join meetings with the finance, with the finance committee. Getting started earlier so that that process can go through.
Any thoughts on that, Rob?
No, I think that's great.
Yeah.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, safe to bring it up, we will. So we talked about their rating matrix at the last go around cycle. I can't recall which one, I think it might have been the repairs to the public safety complex was rated very low. It was one that was rated very low, but I think we felt was kind of pretty conurgent. They were gonna somebody said, oh, it was wrong. They were gonna start looking at, maybe it was Ross, the matrix and how to revitalize that because it wasn't really reflective of the priorities. It just didn't shake out the way it should. And the other conversation we had at the time, bring it up anyways, is um is there redundancy with the capital improvements committee, whereas we have a town manager at this point? How do you long term look at that?
In terms of the witness test, that is something that's under review better. You want something that has some objectivity to it and not just someone subjective belief about what they can lose while reporting. So there are things that, you know, I talked to the town to discuss how the money you thought you sent and how, you know, wishes to ultimately break the problem.
So do you feel that the CIC provides the value that the town manager does not, you know, in terms of uh value in capital projects and that kind of thing?
Well, I think it's helpful to have um a a broader perspective. And I think that the committee provides them.
And you think the membership of having a select board member and a FinCom member, that that, like you have the appropriate assigned members, you know, versus um general volunteer?
Like, I know it's laid out a file, but. Yeah, but no, I think it's it's helpful to have um finance committee and have a select board representation. Those are groups that are diverse in what the town is, their county.
I would just underscore what what Judy said a a couple of minutes ago, which was uh definitely a a, you know, a good discussion at the last meeting is uh you know, part of what happened this cycle is the processes were really parallel and that's not how it should be. Uh really, the capital should have a head start uh so that really by the time article proposals are getting to FinCom, they've already been through the capital process. And as you know, there were a lot of reasons to do to do with that. There was kind of an aberration this year for for a lot of different reasons. Uh both personnel and and board chart changes on both the school and town side and the volume of of projects that were brought forward. Um and uh I think all things considered, it went really smoothly, but it definitely, there was some some redundancy and duplication of effort this cycle uh that was, you know, pretty inefficient uh just in terms of like assembling the same materials kind of from meetings almost back to back and the FinCom being in a position to review things before like CIC had, which they really had to do by necessity. Yeah, you had to. Yeah, we we started with, I think there were sixty three articles. So it was, you know, it was a pretty extraordinary cycle. And all things considered, I think it went went well, but definitely next year and and prior years, the whole idea is for the capital process to precede it uh so that by the time the FinCom really begins this process in earnest, there's been a fair amount of batting uh with the CIC. So I think uh that sequencing is going to be really important. And I would also uh agree with uh you know, Judy, that there's a a really important value of the citizen committee as a sounding board because, well, I and my staff at this point are doing you know, a lot of the work to update the capital program, which maybe six or seven years ago, I think the committee was doing uh more hands on. Uh we need a sounding board to really kind of kick the tires, so to speak, um sometimes literally. But to see, you know, to see uh the the relative urgency of of To see, you know, to see, uh, the the relative urgency of of the proposals. And while the think com and the select board perform that function, the think com's doing that for the universe of articles, the select board is doing the same as well as all your regular business. So I think having a dedicated forum, uh, is really valuable in both this cycle and prior cycles. Uh, you see a depth of focus on specific articles, uh, and, you know, Rick, you see that being a member of the committees that the T I P is really doing a very deep dive on the capital articles, um, that I think ideally we can get to where, because they're doing that, maybe the think com cannot also do that because I do think it gets to be a little bit of a duplication of effort. But I think if it's sequenced properly, that can that can work well.
It's the sequence that.
Yeah, and and I think Wendy, your point about the the threshold, should the threshold be reconsidered? I think it should because, uh, you know, if it just, you know, for something to justify that kind of deeper dive, you know, it was twenty thousand really in today's market, like that doesn't go as far as it used to. And I know CPI and so forth, like the the actual calculated number only brought it up to like thirty. I I I think that's a definitely a discussion that needs to happen of what's the right threshold. Uh, I mean, right now, the the governor's proposed legislation on procurement to increase the requirements for our theme of fifty to one hundred thousand. Just to acknowledge that, like, our money doesn't go as far as.
Thousand dollars doesn't buy you what you used to.
Right, yeah, and and there is a certain amount of overhead associated with the processes that does, you know, during those, uh, three to four months or really four months leading up to town meeting, me and some of my core staff have to push aside a lot of other work because we're putting so many resources toward budget at the town meeting. And and that means, you know, like the P E study, four months goes by in a blink of an eye and we 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 basically couldn't make progress on that because it just was drowned out by the amount of resources we're putting toward the budget and and article process. So if we can generate some efficiency, so we we don't have to like see progress stall on major initiatives because we're we're stretched so thin, that that would be a plus.
Yeah. I mean, is it possible to start like way early, like in the fall?
Yeah.
Have any fright of?
Yeah, that's that's the, and that's what the the town policy is, that the, uh, you know, that the capital program be circulated right by the end of, uh, by the end of October, which I think is the right timing because that gives me and my staff the summer and early fall, and and I say my staff, but that includes Pennsyl as well. I think they're a big driver actually of it. So, uh, they committed to that timeline and they've been good the last few years about getting their projects to us in October. This year, there were some learning curve issues with with some change in personnel and change of, uh, org chart on the school side, so when when the things came in, they really didn't meet what I needed. Uh, so it did take some extra time, but, uh, but yeah, you know, that's how it's intended to work. It's the capital program is circulated basically right after the fall town meeting by the end of October. And then I think it was Ross, one of the discuss, I think it was at the last C S E meeting, he was saying that from where he sits as a member of both, he was feeling like kind of November, December, January should really be like a big investment for the C I C so that February, March, April is really more thinking of. Not that it's, there's no overlap, but but that it would be much more sequential than.
That that would also allow, for instance, for Judy's idea of then you could have some joint discussions towards the end of, of, you know, so starting with us having discussions with them, say, in in December, January. The other thing also to keep in mind is capital project, you can kick off the process by helping the individuals at the operation level start accumulating what they think they're heading towards. So for instance, Brian came up to me and this actually happened to be about the, uh, the repairs to the, um, um, public safety building. And he said, you know, next time that we're going for something like this, I'd I'd like to sit with you and maybe go through it so you can help me parse out what it is. And I think what what we're getting at is capital project can become known for next year until I first, I'm not saying, it's just, it's just the 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 whole thing is like Angus says, the workload is such that everybody waits until start of the deadline. We may, we may, well, I mean, no, no, but.
We start working on July.
Yeah, well.
We start to put in replant in July, August, September, October at a staff level.
At staff level, but they could.
It wasn't ready for prime time, so we didn't, we didn't send something out.
So we could, we could start, make sure that process, uh, is is accelerated in some fashion. I I like the idea of the join, I also like the idea of maybe working with some of the people on what they're originating so they can see the questions ahead of time. You know, Brian found it very helpful to review what Wayne's proposal had been to public trade team. He just arrived at the conclusion, it would be helpful to sit earlier and see what the questions might be about the project. And then that's one observation I make is a lot of times you put something together, but then it still leaves a bunch of stuff to 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 parse out. And it'd be nice to maybe have that go away by the end of December or January.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the starting point for F Y twenty six is is, you know, in the capital program, it's the F Y twenty six column. And you look at it and you say, okay, that's many more projects than we can afford and it's many more projects than we can execute. So so it's a matter of how do you thin that out and throw some ahead. And that's a very iterative process, really with the department heads and with the school. And the other thing that we've made quite a lot of progress on in the last few years, but we're still not fully there is getting everybody to buy into this. We've made total progress at a staff level. But really, in my opinion, the one outlier is Park and Rec. And that's not a bad thing there, a meeting with the chair Tuesday with Brian, I mean, we're actively working on that. But that's an example where like you look at their list of projects, it's very, very lean because they haven't really, over the, over the many, many years and decades, haven't really, I don't, I won't even go beyond, it just hasn't been, so so there's still things that come up that are like technically capital projects that they're just not thinking of in that way.
And quite often they would introduce those right as they went into the operating.
Exactly, exactly.
That's what I'm trying to articulate.
Yeah, and part of that, you know, just in the last four or five years, I mean, how many changes on the Park and Rec commission? We've had like a new chair every year, we've had new membership almost wholesale, like every year or two. And some of them have met very regularly, some of them have met a couple of times a year. So I, you know, I don't want to, I'm not intending to pick on them in any way. But but it's just in terms of our objective, starting when when Wayne and I really began retooling this, you know, five years ago, was to get to where we could all rely on this as a complete representation of what's on the horizon. You know, even there's things that, um, like, uh, you know, with the Route one thirteen, we talked earlier tonight that that's not one project, it's 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 that least four, and it's really going to be seven or eight before it's all said and done. Those are all one here as separate projects and, uh, the River Road, I mean, that's not one project. Each of those culverts is a capital project. You know, so it's, we could, we could spend hundreds and hundreds of hours like updating the capital, but we don't have, you know, I think we do a really good job. But at the end of the day, we we do have to make decisions about do we put our time towards updating the capital program or do we put our time toward
Doing the work.
running the town and doing our jobs. Uh, and and so I think that's where we have to find a balance between, you know, uh, completeness and and some calibration of what our manpower is.
Yeah, makes sense. Judy, anything else you wanted to add, updates from the meeting?
Uh, no, I think we are meeting, we're meeting later this month to start going through some of these issues that, uh, that we're looking at, the witness test that they first would play with the meeting. And then move on to the issue of the bylaw and the policy. And we're looking at the states' updates as as a guidance point. And what should be included in the by, witness that.
I think I think one of the other items we were going to look at at some point, Judy, was, um, whether or not things like engineering studies should be.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for filling out the questionnaire, hope you thought it somewhat useful and it helped for us to, uh, for our non-C S E members, so we get a good value.
Thank you.
All right, so. Jen, can you help me, what what do we skip along?
D C. Recent meeting, mill pond all next year.
Yeah. Do you have, either of you care if we go to a general discussion, right to farm by law? Because we had a couple people. Um, do you have anybody on line that might away from anything?
We got Ram and we.
What are you folks here to discuss?
It'll be all.
Oh, okay. All right, if you, my computer battery dies. So the the, um, hope for the discussion tonight was just to acknowledge receipt of it and the work of the Ad Pop committee that stood this together and to refer this out to, uh, town departments and boards and committees that might have, you know, helpful input. And then at some point we'll gather that all back and then discuss this one. Yeah, but if you have any questions, uh, we have.
I have quite a few.
All right, well, so I don't want to have an end up discussion till we get feedback, but.
It's something to be started.
Okay.
But I will say that I am one hundred percent in favor of agriculture use in the town and the preservation and promotion model, so I don't think Congress to be taken negative. On the first page, that's one bullet I would add is that as you say, advocate for protection of preservation of agricultural lands and continuation of agricultural activities on these properties. It's not articulated that way, and I think that's pretty important because we I need to mill pond and deal there, you just have to make sure that once the town and Friday, it stays in reuse. Um, and I've got a lot of other comments that we can look at, um, later, but the only one thing that you think needs to be. Significantly is another three, the right to farm declaration. And it's a pretty bold statement and we don't know how it will play out. Says that it is hereby determined that whatever impact may be caused to others throughout the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming in the neighborhood, community and society in general.
This is a pretty standard, um, item under a right to farm by law, and this is boiled by either terms of state, I'm just.
Does mean I still agree with it.
Absolutely, but I'm just informing you that that.
Yeah, I think.
And most of the towns that you looked at also had a similar declaration.
In fact, yeah, and it is boiled like from a state.
That that's a pretty hard sell, I would think, the the wording is pretty harsh to guess. I understand the concept and the component. I think it could be crafted better or should be crafted better.
Yeah, it was funny, I I I wondered a little bit about that too, specifically there was a reference to by night every day.
Oh, yeah, I've got a whole bunch of other comments on that, that one sounds.
Yeah, um, that that just stood out to me, um, and and maybe it's partly because I've seen somebody out failing hay at one o'clock in the morning before with lights out in the field and and if I was and of course that would be a rarity, I think it was probably because they had, they had, they had dry hay and it wasn't going to be dry in twelve hours, you know, so, but, um, but, yeah. It's, uh, maybe it's harsh reality.
So what do we do, get comments to you at some point and how do we?
Yeah, so my thought was that we would refer this out already, cover the letter, ask the departments and boards and committees to comment and then have public discussion at a later date, um, that would get more into to details. Um, I probably should have said ahead of time, um, this whole effort was largely initiated by farmers in town, um, and interested parties. There was a a big meeting at the Grange that Senator Tar attended, thirty five people or so over there. So West Newbury residents, either farmers or people interested in farming. Um, and out of that, a handful of people volunteered to be on the committee to actually draft the bylaw. And four meetings, I think, three or four meetings, looking at comparable bylaws in other towns, looking at the state template and then going through iterations. They also spoke to other towns that have, um, passed bylaws and established ag commissions and that kind of the successes and and challenges of that. So the committee really did a lot of work without being appointed by by any, um, town entities. So thank you for your efforts, appreciate that.
You're welcome. And we did, we did do, you know, do diligence by really spending some time talking to other towns who have adopted this. Newbury's adopted it, Coxville's adopted it, most, most of the towns around us have actually. And, um, there are all slightly different, they have slightly different language, but most of them have adopted, um, the state language in in the majority of it, it looks like the state language. But, um, uh, you know, having some farmers on the committee and speaking to some of these towns, it it is really, some of that, what you just read, sounds, you know, you may make it sounds like overreach, but for a farmer who's already, you know, dealing with one crisis after another, especially with climate change and, you know, we're having drought or we're having too much rain, um, they do have to work when they can. Sometimes that's a Sunday, sometimes that's up to midnight, you know, um, getting getting plants into a field or or hay. And so if it doesn't have any teeth, you know, it's kind of useless to the farmer. I mean, that's the whole point behind this is that we're valuing farms and farming communities, so, um, trying to protect them and trying to protect that their ability, they're going to do their job.
No, I appreciate that, and like I said, that's one of the things I think probably all of us looked to West Newbury for was the whole agricultural component. And every year he is seeking shifts away and fading and I appreciate it. But just some of the wording here, I think, could be, because West Newbury is at this transition point, we're becoming much more residential and you don't want to have this antagonistic relationship. The one that drives me crazy is, um, Tendencrop Farms and over on, I don't know what the street is there, Parker Street. And he's been there for like thirty five years and all the new neighbors moving in and saying, oh, your, your cows are stinking out of my yard. Look, how's it been there forever? And so this is, you don't want to see that happen, you know, so I understand the protections and everything that should be put in place, I just want to make sure it gets done properly. And then to Rick's last point, I was chucking, because my first job when I graduated from school was hay for summer and it was the most difficult job you could ever imagine. And I appreciate what every farmer does in the state, if I had to farm for a living, I'd die. So, yeah, it is, I think, I paid my friends in high school.
Anything else either of you like to add?
You know, just wait to hear from you and and move forward and talk and discuss and revise as needed and go from there.
So the plan for the vote was to bring this forward at the fall town meeting, correct?
Correct.
So I think we're we're in good shape to get input from other town boards and committees.
So how, again, how are we going to take, how are you, how is whoever's going to gather the information going to take any information?
I thought I would send the government though and ask for comments if you sent to me and compile it and then share it with the committee and we can all discuss it together or maybe we'll see what the comments are and see how you want to move forward. You may just want to take them yourselves and and try to address them.
So I think this falls on both Chris and, uh, and Rick's question. So where the select board hasn't at this point formally reviewed it or set up here, the power ladder will will make clear that the board is is also at a just at the initial evaluation stage.
Yeah. We just want to thank the whole committee too, because it worked out, Evan, you do what is that? Ad Pop and making an appointed committee and slowing things down, so.
A hundred minutes and.
Yeah, thanks.
Right, right, we probably got it done in ten, five.
Yeah, we should, we should practice that more often.
Yeah, we have a committed group and yes, a passionate group, so it's.
So so Rob, is what you're saying, every time we want to get something done quickly, what we have to do is just ban the committee?
I think we, I think we ought to find some alternative, yes.
Okay, great, thank you both.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go back to D. Item C, recent meeting regarding Mill Pond's All Access Trail. Um, this, this is a follow up to the failed effort, not failed effort, but a lack of consensus, um, a couple of years ago between the Mill Pond Committee, Park and Rec and the Open Space Committee. So this was an effort by Michelle, being the conservation agent to just get the conversation going and and we did, so Open Space Committee is going to pursue this with the Mill Pond Committee and just look at doing the all access trail from the parking lot around the corner near the dam, not doing whole parking rerouting. So their loose plan, if they can come to agreement with Mill Pond Committee, is to bring a C P C application to the fall town meeting for for the design and then hope to go for, um, construction funding with the mayor. And then hope to go for, um, construction funding with the, not the grant, the M.A.S.
MASTRO grant.
MASTRO grant.
And the MASTRO grants due February first, but the idea that, uh, they talked about at yesterday's meeting was actually February first of twenty twenty-six uh, to allow time, assuming, uh, there's funding approved in the fall to take their conceptual uh, planning to a, you know, more of a design plan that's a good basis for construction estimates. To then go to the fall town meeting in twenty twenty-five uh, to get the appropriation to seek a MASTRO grant February of twenty twenty-six. Is it's a reimbursement grant, so, um, you're going to be better positioned to appropriate funds prior to seeking the grant. And there's also a, a twenty-five percent match. Uh, so let's say the project is, uh, uh, let's say you're seeking a hundred thousand dollars, you have to have appropriated a hundred and twenty-five thousand to cover both the, um, grant funds you're seeking and the twenty, twenty-five percent match. So uh, that was the timeline that was talked about yesterday, which, which, uh, I think is realistic, uh, even with the, um, you know, period of short staff that will have in a conservation seat. So I did, uh, in preparation for yesterday afternoon's meeting, I did take Christine Wallace out on a a walk of the area. And I put together a lot of my prior records because all of the work that took place primarily in, uh, twenty twenty-two had preceded her hire, uh, and actually preceded Michelle's hire as well, most of it. Uh, so I've been together a lot of my files and so I can give Christine Wallace a good briefing so that, uh, if it does at some point become a project that that she's, uh, directly involved in the background, which walked out on site and had a good, um, you know, that, that was time well spent. So I have that, you know, uh, for instance, for Chris, where you weren't on the board at that time, I have like a packet with a lot of background and if, if either of the others of you want a refresher, I've, I've put it, it's organized.
Only some of this came up during like the COVID influenced era. So it was like particularly frenetic and it was funny kind of going back through and putting back the records. I could almost remember like.
Like where you were at?
Yeah, what, what else we were doing at the time as she was going forward. See, I, I was going to ask, you know, all access trail. I have one impression of that, but I'm sure there's legal definitions and obviously certain people have already explored it and everything else. So at some point you need to get a sort of picture of that.
Yeah, the intent is to have a gravel pack. I mean, there's certain standards of the way it's constructed, but.
Lots of grade and.
Yeah.
Everything else.
Not to grade, but this, I mean, it's relatively flat. It shouldn't be heavy lift, but to go around the corner to the little hour.
That's where I get.
But there are accessibility features that aren't required to be improved, uh, included, but, but which some, uh, would like included for for different types of disabilities, um, you know, audio or, or different things. And, and so there are features that could be added. And that's where the design process is going to need to be really, uh, taken into account, all those opinions and, uh, figure out what the, what the town as a whole really wants to do. Because there's a lot of opinions on this.
Yes.
You sure?
Okay, so we're moving on to item E F, which is the FY twenty-five holiday recognition schedule. So this needs to be booked in on, correct?
Uh, you know, we should, we always share it with you, uh, just it's.
Okay.
The, the holidays are all set out of personnel policy. So it's just to the extent, if there's any nuances on the holidays following a certain day, you know, we, we follow the state schedule, but
Yeah.
this isn't, is not required. I've always found it helpful to, to kind of do it a year at a time. Because there always end up being questions and I just assume like get it all squared away so that, you know, I'm not scrambling, you know, two weeks before Thanksgiving as to whether
Right.
this or that is going to be the, the day.
So this year, all three departments are the same? Is, is sometimes differences between library and public works?
Uh, there are sometimes, yeah, because just really librarians are sometimes being the, the, um, the kind of different one because they are open on Saturdays where its town office isn't. So sometimes there are some nuances there.
That's funny because I looked through it and thinking, why didn't we have three line and just compile it to one? Cause they're all identical.
Yeah, but.
The vastest difference.
Yeah, sometimes they're not.
Yeah. Okay, looks good to me. Great.
Yeah. One, it doesn't make sense because I know we have at least two people who are also Bill and are you?
All three of us are Bill's and Bill.
Does it make sense to?
Um, sure. Yeah, so that would be item F.
The B.
B.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, so this is a request for a policy direction. Angus, do you want to?
Yeah, so the, the, really the, uh, the, the question is, uh, and obviously we've got the people asking the question here. So, you know, they can but the, the question that as I'm looking at it and the building inspector is looking at it is, um, we have a parcel with, um, frontage on an unconstructed public right of way. And so under the, um, zoning, uh, the definition of frontage was amended a number of years ago to require a constructed public way. So right now, the, um, the actual constructed roadway ends, um, you know, either at or very soon after the, uh, property line. And there is a little bit of a discrepancy between the survey plan and the G I S. I'm always going to rely on survey plan as being the more accurate. So that's, uh, shown that roughly forty feet of constructed way exists past the property line. If you look at the town G I S, uh, and you can see what the survey has shown, the existing driveway being, you know, not quite bisected, but, but then it looks like the driveway process, the actual property line. Any other point is, uh, for the building inspector to find this a buildable lot, he's got to find that the lot has frontage. Uh, since it's a public right of way, it's not a, it's not a new, uh, right of way. It's not a subdivision. Uh, the question really becomes what level of construction is going to be um, necessary in order for it to be considered legal frontage under zoning?
Hmm.
Uh, so I, you know, this was put on tonight really to raise the issue to your awareness as a board. Uh, not to seek a vote because it's the first time that you're hearing about it. Uh, but, um, uh, I think the materials in the, in the packet will give enough background to at least give me and my staff some policy direction as to what you as the roadway commissioners would be uh, expecting. I did go out and visit the site, uh, for those of you who haven't been out there, uh, you know, the roadway ends and it, it very quickly gets, you know, it's very uh, heavily wooded out there. It grades starts to drop off pretty fairly steeply soon after the, um, end of the constructed way.
And he said that Sam has looked at it.
Yeah, Sam's looked at it and, and one, one feature, and I, I referenced this in the memo I wrote, uh, in your packet is this is a little bit of a unique situation, partly because the parcel in question uh, actually includes the land after the end of the right of way. So it's not like the right of way connects to abiding lands that would potentially allow for further extension.
Which is critical because that parcel out back is the landlocked one.
Right, that would be a really different situation.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that I think is something you want to take into account as you consider the question is that there isn't the potential for it to be further extended. Um.
Well, it can be further extended, but up to itself. It couldn't be further extended access.
Correct. Yeah, the right of way couldn't be further extended without, without a side, without a definitive subdivision, platter.
Okay, just a minute.
Um, and from, I think what I picked up from, from, uh, all materials when the roadway was constructed or when the lot was created, um, I think there was an A and R on it. And at that point, it wasn't required that there be a constructed roadway, you know, a paved roadway. But at this point in time, there is now a requirement that it be a paved roadway. So that was.
So the constructed roadway.
Yeah.
Constructed, yeah.
Like, I guess you can construct a gravel driveway. Um, typically now we're talking about paved driveway or paved, paved roadway, I mean, um, so.
Did you have a question with this? Um.
Uh, this one maybe.
Okay. Would you want to?
I could provide you with some history there to make things a little bit clearer. Um, by the way, when I purchased this lot back in nineteen eighty-five, back then doing the due diligence on, you know, purchasing it, it's like, well, what is Ilse Lee Hill Road? Well, nobody kind of knew what Ilse Lee Hill Road was. And no one ever, ever knew if the town had abandoned it or kept it alive, you know, after or whatever. So some forty-eight years ago, we had a town meeting where the town needed that end of the two hundred feet to the lot. Um, and maintain that two hundred feet of, of Ilse Lee Hill Road as unconstructed.
So the.
Does that help?
The reason they dated that is so that we're safe with the land. So the, it was, nobody can come in, but Ilse Lee Hill.
Are you guys Carl, Melanie?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
I see you're. Fifty or two together.
So what, what did it say on the, um, the survey plan?
So yeah, it's a little odd because you look here and obviously
Yeah.
G I S is short, forget it survey. So it's not to be, but, but you know, you can see on, on this, it seems to show that the constructed way ends really at the property line. The survey plan shows something very different.
Hmm.
Uh, so.
It showed Regalia's lot line further to the east. If you go back to the sketch. So it's got, Bannan Drive's line is that way to the west. Should, the survey is showing it right in the center of the driveway.
Yeah, it's showing.
Not the construction of the road that's off, it's the location of the lot line.
Yes, which we found in many.
We have. But we found it in many instances by Q P, but this is, this is very, um, really.
It seems like it's thirty or forty feet.
Yeah.
It is Regalia's driveway based on that.
It's forty feet.
So where it says accepted in nineteen eighty-five by town meeting, it, that's not the same thing as deeding it to the, the property line, is it?
No.
So you're saying it was deeded to you by the town?
Yeah, so.
The little.
There's, there's.
The entire.
Oh, oh.
The little hand.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
And Norman Hobson signed it. If anybody remembers.
I remember.
Yeah.
So they, they accepted the road back or did whatever they did back in nineteen eighty-five to straighten this question at home. So now it's just a question of, does that, that road need to be improved or is it fine where it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it makes no sense to improve that road because it goes to nowhere.
Hmm.
Um, and down isn't interested in, you know, maintaining and allowing another two hundred feet of road. Um, we're not interested in building two hundred feet of road that goes to the open. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. I think we'll have to rely on our staff members to, to give their professional.
Oh, just to give you a little bit of background.
I appreciate that.
I think, you know, in a normal situation, um, this, this is what this is kind of a picture perfect example of what is called illusory frontage.
Hmm.
Which I think you're probably really familiar with that concept from your time on the planning board. Uh, in a normal situation, like town would say you have to build it through the required frontage, which could be as could be reduced to a hundred feet with a special permit for the planning board, but, but the zoning in this, in this is two hundred feet unless reduced to a hundred, but even a hundred feet, you know, and again, I'll reference, I was out there and, and like it, you can't tell on this, but it's drops off pretty steeply like shortly after the constructed way. So even extending, I mean, you're talking about major impacts, major, uh, costs and so forth. To what end? But, but normally a town, you know, you need to look at this as a townwide with regard to precedent.
Right.
Because, um, you know, frontage is an absolutely critical um, like foundational concept for zoning and buildable lots. So, you know, you have to look at, is there, you know, you don't, you don't want to take an action that some future developer is going to come in and say, oh, oh, you can't require me to require frontage because you're allowed this. So that's why I did talk to, um, uh, the prospective buyer earlier this week, you know, there are some unique situat, you know, features of this. To me, one of them is definitely the fact that goes to nowhere as opposed to the right of way connecting to a abiding land. The other is my understanding is the there's not only an intent, but a willingness to commit to a limit on that this four point seven five acres would accommodate at most two houses.
With it.
So something like a deed restriction that could be imposed as a condition of whatever action this board may take might, you know, hedge against a p- potential presidential value in the future.
What's the zone district? Yeah.
Uh, B.
What's that?
It's, I think it's whatever the large lot.
So it's.
I, I, I think.
Maybe one floor or something like that.
So the driveway that's shown that if there were to be two houses on there, that driveway would provide access for both?
Not this driveway.
So.
No. Well, that's, that's a good question. I, I don't know. Uh.
But how, how would you get more than one house lot with two hundred feet of frontage?
You, you need some kind of special permit.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So that the anticipation is split the lot?
The immediate anticipation is to build one house on the lot.
But there's kind of expressed interest in.
Well.
Reserving the ability to do a second?
Well, yeah, that was because my understanding was that that might require a, uh, a shorter amount of frontage, but, uh, the agreement that Carl and I have on the P N S is that, uh, approval for one lot so that we can, uh, consummate the, uh, the transaction. Um, my interest is, uh, to make Zero Ilse Lee Hill on final resting place. I've been a resident.
You started there, right?
Been a resident for twenty years. Um, and I've been, uh, trying to dodge, uh, developments since I was a little kid and, uh, I, I was, you know, looked at the Lovejoy Farm. I was a little bit late on that. So, uh, when this came up, I thought this was, uh, an ideal opportunity for me to, uh, potentially get into some kind of stewardship of, uh, uh, forwarding, uh, development. So, uh, I live on Crane next street at the moment and, uh, I'm looking to, uh, move to, uh, those lake hill at some point. And, uh, you know, my, my interest is to not pave the driveway. My interest is to do whatever I possibly can to preserve and protect, uh, the, uh, majestic integrity of the area up there, which if anybody has spent any time in the woods around it, it's, uh, unparalleled. It's absolutely gorgeous and, uh, you know, it's my, my mission.
I guess we're not going to sell it, huh?
And I have, you know, I have a, a son and a daughter. My, my son's has, you know, uh, the same type of interests, uh, and we spent quite a bit of time, uh, uh, on the pond behind my house in the woods and, uh, you know, just, uh, very important to us.
Hmm. So if, uh, how would fire access and that kind of thing be, you know, if there's not going to be, you know, is that part of?
It, it is, absolutely.
Okay.
But it is, that's why the typical requirement is paved.
Right.
That's where.
So, but the building inspector is the only person that would.
It ultimately, the building inspector has to find that it's a billable lot.
Okay.
So he absolutely has to be part of the discussion. I know you have had discussions with Sam. He's he's available to come to a future meeting. Uh, so there, I think there's a, an important interplay between building inspector and the select board as the roadway commissioners.
Yeah.
Um, as to what, you know, what level of, uh, you know, what would be necessary.
Hmm.
Um.
And you said the planning board does not have a role, even though we're talking about.
They, you know, I sent it to them, uh, when I used to be a town planner in Marshfield, that this absolutely would have been a planning board issue, um, with the, you know, the sample policy included in there. Um, it, that's not a policy here. They, they don't feel that they really have anything to do with it because it is already a public right of way. Uh, there's no subdivision involved. Uh, but I do think, you know, this, this whole issue of, and I know, I understand the near term focus is a single house. But if there is a longer term intent in at least preserving an option for a potential second house, I definitely think you'd be strongly advised to work with the town planner to understand that under what circumstances could that be allowable in any? Because if that's part of what you have in your
Right.
head and that's material to your decision to let it by the land, you, you need to do your.
Right now, what I have in my head as far as purchasing the land is, is one, one building and we. Right now, what I have in my head as far as purchasing the land is, is one, one building and we have a, a timeframe. The PNS, I believe, was signed in March and, um, it, uh, uh, gets stale, I think, in July. So unless Carl was willing to, uh, allow a little time for this to be debated and, uh. You know, they're, they're probably to the end of the timeline.
Hey, one thing I just noticed that I thought was in the packet materials while I'm watching it is the opinion for Lisa May.
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
That was, because I have that and I, I would swear that was in the packet materials, but I see.
You, you referenced it, you may have.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Got that.
Yeah, that should be, you need to see that. But what it basically says is, is really in much more legalistic terms, exactly what I've said, which is that it's a public right of way. And it says basically that, that the town may require improvements for it to be considered legal frontage.
Right.
It, it just takes three pages to say that, but that's basically what it says.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty boiled, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but improvements in this situation, it doesn't really benefit the endangered species. There's, uh, you know, the, the slope isn't a concern and, uh, you know, it's something that, uh. A lot of time and energy would be put into it and, uh, it would be, you know, counterproductive to what the land is up there.
Yeah. Any other questions or direction for Angus to see what town status?
Looking at the building inspector in general, I mean.
Yeah.
He's going to have his opinion. My personal feeling is. And this is because I live on a long windy driveway in the middle of nowhere. If it was one lot, again, I don't know the legal reason that will go to the building inspector. To put a driveway on right off the end of there is like, that's seems fairly reasonable. If you get into two lots then, like, that's, that makes it a little cloudier for me.
Right, if it's two lots too, then, well, you'd have to create sufficient frontage. It looks like currently frontage is, uh, um, about two hundred and forty feet. Uh, and then forty-six feet on that end of that. So depending upon how you, how you look at it, so. You know, it would require reduced frontage.
So that would become a planning board.
Right, right, definitely goes a planning board issue, but then, then also your costs go up in a big way.
And I've had a few meetings with Sam Jostl, who I believe is very supportive of the idea of pulling the driveway off that forty foot segment.
Right, but to Rick's point, I think that's what Angus was trying to say a little bit earlier. If you're talking about one house on that lot, it's this level of difficulty. If you try to do two, I imagine it becomes like this level of difficulty.
Well, right now it's one, one lot.
Yeah, right, so just. You may all want to talk about one lot.
But yeah, I mean, both Sam and, and this board have to really look at the townwide implications of whatever decision is made. Because if you make a decision that, for instance, no improvement was needed.
No, I basically set the precedent to go the wrong way, yeah.
Made the town, you cannot enforce frontage requirements going forward. I mean, that's a, that's an. Uh, that I understand your intent and your vision for, for this land, but, um. You know, a developed, that, that becomes a loophole that someone can drive up, uh, they can well or through without, with their eyes closed, honestly, so. Uh, that's where, you know, my memo was kind of floating the idea of some kind of deed restriction as well as specific findings that basically. Find that this is a unique situation, X, Y, Z, those kinds of things. So it's kind of, and I think really all three of you have been on the planning board over your years. So you all know what planning boards do. It's kind of putting you in that more.
That's what I'm thinking, what can they do with it?
Well, I. I think they're better equipped to, they deal with this stuff all the time. Uh, so, and the other thing that, that, you know, I can't help, uh, miss the perils of this, the poor house lane.
Yeah.
Situation and that the, uh, you know, the tri-party agreement was entered in the early eighties between the select board, the planning board and, and the office. Uh, that, that led to forty years of legal ambiguity and. And, you know, as recently as a year and a half ago, eight thousand dollars town legal costs trying to untangle that agreement from the early eighties. So almost exactly situ-, similar situation where the board in that case had agreed to allow, uh, up to two house lots. Provided the public right of way was improved through the required frontage.
Hmm.
Allowed a private loan, uh, but, you know, this is a quite similar.
I think the other thing that's unique is that Ilse Hill went all the way through it sometime, you know, at one point. And the town kind of forgot that it was there. So no one was really sure whether it had been abandoned or.
No, a lot of it was like that.
I thought the town actually made a legal decision, I was close.
They.
But Ilse Hill landed there.
Yeah, when they needed that end little corner over to, um.
That's a lot, that's how they dealt with. That's how they dealt with.
Back in nineteen eighty-five and, and back in nineteen eighty-five, they had to be, um, and approve properly.
Yeah, I think, um, there are. Very few besides this, maybe not any remaining. Dead end roads where the dead end isn't defined by, obviously there was poor house lane. Um, this is this, but I'm just trying to think of, that there are a few examples left in town.
Would we end up going down by, uh, the river road crossing roadway? Is that, is that?
That's still a public right of.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's a loose end I've talked about as recently as the last couple of months and, you know, we, me and Michelle and Butch would really like to get that resolved. But again, that's going to take many, many dozens of hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
And you made a decision not because it's, it's, we, you know, we're trying to do everything, you know.
How does work on a dead end street like, um, Brown Lane? Like the whole fire and then coming in, no place to turn around alone, uh, we had a big fire on Brown Lane.
Yeah, you, you can have dead end roads. It, now they wouldn't build a dead end road, it's built a color back, but.
So is that what it is? I mean, this one couldn't be a dead end road?
No, but, 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 but you're on a constructed way there right now.
Okay.
It's a difference. It's, it's the pavement difference, but.
So is it worth following up with the planning board to request that they provide input or?
I would say at least input direction, let's say, on. It seems like it's a planning board issue versus a select board issue.
I think it's fault because the roadway doesn't.
The roadway again.
Yeah, I mean, this, this board would need to consent to any improvements being made because you control the right of way.
Yeah.
But in terms of just determining what level of improvements, if any, ought to be required for access or public safety or, or what have you. That's more of a, you know, public safety and planning.
Hmm.
So the more, the more limitation, if, if it was in fact allowed, the more limitations. Um. The more limitations there are in what can be done, say one lot as opposed to two lots or. I guess that's the primary thing. Uh, it, then, then that, and, and if that's written into. Uh, you know, made a, made a legal document, whether that goes on the deed or however that, that goes, then that narrows. The precedent, narrows the future vulnerability to a precedent, doesn't it?
It narrows.
Yeah.
I, I, it doesn't limit, it doesn't limit.
Yeah.
But it's still.
Right.
Uh, right.
Okay, so should we reach out to the planning board or not? Or just?
Well, I guess, I, yes, we should. I guess the only reason it came to me is because they kicked it to me, so.
Okay.
So.
Do you want me to reach out to Brian and see, I don't know if he's still the chair. Or here, no, okay, okay, fair. Or would that be better for me, I guess?
I'll, I'll talk to Sue, I'll let her, I've been keeping her and Sam apprised, they, they both were aware this was on for discussion tonight. And I, I left it that I'd love to know what came out of it and we'll definitely have the conversation and I'll get a better sense from her of. Uh, and, and Craig, you would, you might know this, did the planning board as a board talk about this or is it something that? The planner brought for the chair and the chair basically said he's not putting up the agenda?
I, I, I think they just had a discussion and handed it over to you.
Do you know?
They didn't want it.
That's still showing us Brian, so maybe it is still Brian, did, do, have you heard?
Uh, they just reorganized it.
Yeah.
I didn't watch the last one.
Okay.
You can stay there then.
It's kind of sort of continue this in another.
Yeah, I mean, I do, you know, we heard, uh, you know, Greg, you were clear times of the absence and, you know, granted it's not your, you know, it's not. You don't have the land under agreement and the town has to balance this with all the other things for item.
Put the time aside, you're both here in the same room. If he needs an extra month to close a deal, are you going to shut him out? So, okay.
I, um, um, it, my intent is to, is to work this out and, uh, you know, uh. I, I don't want to, uh, dally in pursuing that at, at all.
We don't want to dally either.
I just, I was saying, from, from, you know, my perspective, my energies, I want to do whatever I possibly can to help out and to, and to move forward. And, you know, if Carl's kind enough to, uh, allow that extension so that, uh, the, uh, PNS doesn't fail, then, you know, that, that would be great.
We had a conversation earlier tonight about sometimes moving too fast creating issues. And so I think we have to get all the right answers before we move too fast and create a big issue.
And then we go.
Everyone has a problem.
I'm not looking to drag a fee either.
Yeah, and, and going into this, you know, since this is my first, uh, experience with this, I mean, I wanted to get as much time as I possibly could. So, uh, you know, as long as that's okay with you, Carl, and we can keep everything alive and, and moving forward, then. Whatever we have to do, um, you know, this.
Just, uh, two, two kind of brief comments to, to maybe wrap things up. But thi- this is really a, a great example of where kind of, how you square common sense with legal requirements and exposure. Because when you do walk up, that's my second point, is I was trying to recommend for those of you not familiar, go take a look. Because it really, until you see it on the ground, that's, that's when it just becomes so obvious that some. Like, oh, you got to extend it two hundred feet or even a hundred feet, just it makes no sense in terms of the land and. That doesn't mean it's a billable lot. What, what does mean just logically, like, common sense, it kind of runs into this definition of frontage, so. And then, yeah, the second is just go take a look at it because that'll really, uh, you know, um.
All right. Did they ever get an approval not required on this?
I haven't had, uh, this first came to me, you basically have everything.
When Carl walked, you go to the planning board, get an A and R on it and say it was a building lot?
Uh, back in eighty-five.
But at that point, the definition of frontage didn't require a constructed way.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a step in it then. We had a problem with the one on Ash Street coming out of the swamp up on the hill. They received a, um. Permit or A and R for it. And they didn't build it at the time. They came back when I was on planning board wanting to build, but then we'd had slope requirements in place, which would have precluded them building. But where it said it already been approved as a lot, they were allowed to build. My question would be, is they allowed to still build regardless of the frontage, even though they had, they've gotten approved A and R? And it hasn't been rescinded in any fashion.
Uh, we can look into it, but just because something's a lot doesn't make it a billable lot.
Okay, I just would be cautious.
Approval not required means.
There are grandfathered lots that predate the adoption of zoning that under state law are billable lots.
Well, what are you going to say, that was sufficient as frontage to build?
Right, well, that was where I was going, I understood that.
Right.
So that change that's been made since the lot, since the A and R was done. So does that, does that rate to build random lives him in, go, go along? Just with time, it's.
If it will not require, it means it's a billable lot.
No.
No, it means it's not subdivision requirements still.
It, it has no bearing.
Okay, fine. So that, that wouldn't really address it then.
Yeah. Okay.
But that's, that, that history is really, would be really good, uh, and Sue may have this, that's the thing, I mean, where it's sent to me where this isn't what I'm doing every day.
Right.
Like Sue's going to have those records of when was it divided, you know, when was the A and R, what were the, um, circumstances that that approval is. Right, depending, but that create, those are all things that town planner does every day, that's why we have.
We should ask, ask the planning board to look at it and we should move on before Christmas.
Good.
I just wanted to ask if you guys have that copy of the piece of paper from the town meeting in nineteen eighty-five where they granted us that?
It would certainly be somewhere in the files, but it's not something I've, I've seen.
Well, just kind of.
Yeah.
Help you to release what was going on.
Yeah, all of that.
Mom said that all.
Yeah, yeah, every, everything we have, any kind of judicial document, that would be helpful to just round out our files on it. Because, uh, pretty much all I have is what she happened to.
Tell me that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we go back to the, um, review of the select board name schedule for the year twenty twenty-four.
There are two, basically there's two different tracks. It's not all the. I, I just think, I just, if, uh, there's been a header on it.
Yeah, that hurt my head, I, I just got a question.
Well, well, I was like, oh, do you have that? And I just sent this to her. Because I said, this is all I have.
Oh, all right, well.
All right, so any issues with the Thursdays? I like it because it's keeping Angus out of town, I was chilling on weekends.
Okay.
So.
I have a feeling I.
I, I.
I have been assigned warrants, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's great, um, overall, but, um, my, my one issue is that. I haven't looked to see who's playing what nights, but it is Thursday nights in the summer when the bandstand concerts go on.
Oh, good.
And, and so I generally go to two or three and I don't go to the night, it might be good, but.
Well, you have every other week.
And we, we don't need to decide all this tonight. I think what we, we, as long as we're clear, we're clear through June, so. And it is late.
Yeah.
Like, um.
All right.
Can I just throw my two cents in?
Sure.
It's worth less than two cents. I will do whatever it takes to accommodate Angus and keep him out of town hall on the weekends.
Yeah.
Which is why I will go with Thursdays, but I hate it because I leave the day on the packet. Typically, I have a Friday, I mean, Saturday, Sunday and Monday. When now with the, the posting time, I only have two days and sometimes that's short, so.
It is, yeah, it is, uh, and it's, it's.
But I'd rather have you have the time off.
It's, it's, uh, yeah, it's a trade-off because I do think if we get into a regular s- schedule of Thursdays, uh, I know, you know, Wendy and I are typically. Doing some work on the agenda the prior Friday. Uh, but we, you know, if it doesn't get finalized still, you know, say late Monday, then we're really putting the packet together Tuesday, so it would. But I think if we, if we.
I'm not going to get it.
No, no, but if, but we could, if we, if we organize around the new schedule and, um. You know, if we get to a point where we're not doing like MVP grants and all of a million things where.
Let me know when that passes, okay?
It's been, it's just we're, we're, everything's last minute because we're absolutely pressed to the max. Deadline to have a work every, every.
I just got accustomed to having the three days.
Yeah.
I only had to go in the first place, it wouldn't matter.
If, if we end up, if we end up going with basically a primarily Thursday schedule, you know, I know Wendy and I could get the agenda really squared away by Friday.
Sure.
And that would allow me and my staff to get the packet ideally ninety percent completed by the end of Monday. And there, maybe there'd be some supplemental stuff just from late breaking information, but I think we could accommodate that.
And I can deal with the Thursday meetings particular, like I say, if it gives you the, the weekends off and almost forces you, but give you that luxury.
Because I think it has been really nice these last couple of weekends to actually, you know, just.
Yeah, it's great.
Like it's.
Really to have a family life?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good solid.
All right, so let's look at the Thursday meeting column and make a decision next meeting.
So, so the only, for whatever it's worth, the only two Thursdays that. Well, I can sort of first must be.
Yeah, eighteen to Thursday.
Yeah, yeah. Where's the schedule? I was looking.
Uh, so it was sent out, we are sent out, I'm using the math again, but if you go to the games.
Oh, okay.
It shows that, I guess, one of them has the calendar, the full calendar.
Now, it's hardly scheduled through already. We've gone, we've gone to July, you know, I get July first on this as far as when, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I have no idea what I'm really.
So I think we have a Monday, June twenty-fourth.
So for the Thursdays, yeah, for the next couple of weeks, it's the fourth. And then we have the twentieth, well, that's right, fourth, twenty-fourth, and then first.
Yeah.
So we have packed a bag meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, somewhere given, yeah. If we're back on it.
All right. Okay, well, let's, we'll solve that next time. Do you, you looking at that over if you see it?
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know.
Okay, all right, next time.
So I'll record it later.
All right.
Record it.
Let's hold on the minutes. Um, general discussion item C, there was a pending expiration of contract.
Yeah, so the main question I had, I, I, I started a transmittal memo and I ran out of time, so I know it's just like a stranded contract, but. But my intent in putting this on is really twofold. One is to let you know the contract's coming up for expiration and renewal. And really to put it in front of you to say, are there any material changes you might like to see? One thing I would like to, to draw your attention to, uh, that, uh, was a major point of discussion a few years ago, it was a very different board at that point. But there is, uh, right now, language in here that requires, uh, this is item thirteen. Provider should submit a monthly report for Sleckman with a copy of the police chief by the plantation on total calls proceeding months, reach call response. This hasn't happened, it's never happened. This is something Archie felt really strongly about. Uh, he really pushed for this and I remember this came up, I think this is the second renewal I'm seeing, I think it was being renewed right around when I started.
And they have the same one?
Brand new, and then again, a few years later, and I remember Archie being really hung up on that, feeling very strongly about it. It, it wasn't happening then, it hasn't happened since. I remember shortly after this one, I think I followed up with Catalo like once. I got one or two reported, but it's, it's never happened. So my feeling is. What level of reporting do we want? And, and my feeling? I don't want monthly reports. I don't know what I would do with them. I get too much paper as it is. If we want reports, I would recommend let's set a reasonable quarterly, biannual, something that if it's of value, let's ask for it and let's hold into it. To me, having a, a basically requirement that's never been enforced, I'd rather either delete it or modify it. And if we modify it, let's do it based on it providing some actionable value, you know, I feel like cheap wire.
What do you, what do you used to now?
Like, to me, this was like kind of a relic of, of.
Or what should come from the police anyways to get the ambulance, call them in the first place, so it's kind of redundant.
Yeah, it's all going through dispatch, like they have all, so to me, if we, it would just. So that's the one I wanted to focus on, cause before going to them and saying, oh, this is just a routine, like, let's just change the dates and go forward. I feel like let's read it. And to Chris's point, let's take the time to read it. Do we like it? Do we wanna change it? And so whatever direction needed tonight or at the next meeting. You know, um, we can work with them to get whatever changes, but, but just like any contract, I feel like we should say what we mean and mean what we say and.
We just change it to annual report, do it once a year?
Why, why do we need a report?
I think it's probably helpful or beneficial to see how things go year to year, I don't think.
Will we require in the police department to inform us?
It'd be, yeah, it would be a good conversation to have with Wire, say, does he have what he needs? Cause if he has what he needs. Maybe it's a requirement of your employee to get sure, or that he may already have.
It's not that if we're requiring reports from the vendor, we're kind of micromanaging what the, what. What the police or the fire chief or, you know, whoever's responsible in public safety is, is doing.
Right, let me bring.
Ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Whereas this is a contract, does it need to go out the bin?
No, there's no, we don't pay them anything.
Yeah, no, that'll be the next question.
Yeah, so, and, and in practice, they're not, they're not by any means the sole provider of the service in town, it's, is, uh, who's available. So if there's a call put out for an ambulance, it's whoever is available and, uh, that's actually been one of the things, cause they, they may or may not have, uh. You know.
And then they talk to us, I think it's on the line, yeah.
Yeah, so it goes to, uh, a mutual aid.
So, again, obviously, unfortunately, I've had too much ambulance experience in the past couple of months. Never been able to let, so.
Did you, did you get a adequate response? Did they?
That's going again. Something came quickly enough.
Our whole public safety.
It's phenomenal, the police, the dispatch, everything, and the ambulances, it really was phenomenal.
Yeah.
You'd think it would take forever, they were there so fast. Yes, compliments to everybody involved, but it's very. Very good as far as that process goes. My one comment is. Item number eight, it talks about they will take you to any facility within ten miles of the town of West Newbury. Now, the issue I had was cardiac and you've gotta go to Portsmouth, so I think the distance. Need to be clarified specifically, at least as far as Portsmouth.
Yeah, I don't think objects is still trauma.
They don't have a cardio, they don't have.
You know, you don't wanna go to April.
Okay, you're in the process.
You actually have a good doctor closer than that.
So then the question about we don't pay them. Now I saw the insurance bills. How, first of all, I don't even know how they got my insurance information. They took me, drove me and then the bill hit the house and said it was paid by insurance, which.
They dug out your pants.
Exactly, I would say.
I'm not gonna touch that conversation, I get a little out of ways. So, I, I just, obviously it's insurance, what if somebody doesn't have insurance?
That was, so in my last application of Anna, now ambulance.
That said insurance doesn't fix.
Yeah.
Right. No, in, in my last job, we ran an, uh, an ambulance, that was part of a service we provided and. And one of the things that me and my. And we didn't have dedicated staffing, we had a, a support who was doing fifty other things and Andrew was doing, and. So it was, it was always a big lift a couple of times a year to bring to the council. We prevent, present them a, a long list of all of the uncollectible ambulance bills, because the town as a matter of policy. Had decided it wasn't sending the people to collections, you know, it would send bills, it would send a follow-up bill. If people aren't gonna pay, they would ultimately write it off. I didn't have the authority to write it off, I brought that to the council, but it was a kind of a. You know, kind of pro forma thing where, um. Every year or so, we, it was at least once a year, cause for, for audit purposes, we had to get it off the books as, as a uncollectible.
So who writes it off? The town or the ambulance company?
In that instance, it was the town council. I don't know here, uh, how that goes, possibly we're not directly involved.
Because one of the, I shouldn't just say it, one of the guys in one of the trips said to me, you know, you don't have to pay the bill, nobody ever does. But, so, I don't know, but just to put the perspective, I did see the bills. It's five, from here enforcement, five thousand bucks. And I could get an Uber for thirty one dollars, I did check, so.
And you really beg the answer.
Oxygen tank.
So next time we'll have dispatch calling an Uber?
Yeah. No, I just find it's a staggering number. I just feel bad for people without insurance, if they get a bill for five thousand. You're gonna have a second heart attack when you open the bill.
Yeah, I definitely think we, you know, we can invite in, I, I'll say Catala, they've been good to, good to work with, it's been a couple of years, but back when we were doing.
Three.
We had a number of conversations, there, you know, I know they'd be happy to come meet with the board, I think it'd be great to have a conversation with Wire. You know, what should we be looking for and then maybe, you know, have, uh, Catala coming, just to build a relationship and that way you can. Ask those questions and, uh, just out of curiosity.
One last question, cause time to finish, where, where are they garage, you know?
Down by, uh.
Train station?
No, no, they're, they're down, I think they're still down on, um, Murmex Street or, uh. That's where they used to be.
Their response time was, was very, very quick.
Sure, maybe they're, maybe they're not there.
They used to go by the train station, I don't know if they still are, right before Metzies. Anyways.
All right, correspondence.
So just as, as follow ups, you know, I'll talk to Dwyer, each of you can too, is if you want, uh, we'll look at the items thirteen and eight. If there's items, other items you specifically wanna look at, let me know, and then. Once we kind of feel that we collectively have the right questions to ask or changes we might like to see. Uh, then we can, as I, uh, so I can, I can reach out to Catalo in the near term and see if like June twenty fourth works for them, they're kind of. Have a conversation.
Okay, good. All right, new report awarded seven hundred fifty thousand dollar, that's not a surprise.
No, it's not new money, it's just that they have another contract.
Yeah, okay, and then.
Hopefully not to be squandered.
Right. Uh, item B, notice the intent to renew the land from sixty one A, that's. Not, what, what's their right term?
Uh, basically, the notice was, was deficient, so the clock hasn't started.
I love the attorney's letter, cause that's what I was getting that last week, it has to be based on a. Bonafide purchase and sale.
Yeah.
And not for this one, cause I'm not sure we have any interest, but for process and others in the town.
Or, or a specific, uh. Statement of their intent to develop it themselves as a house.
Yeah, it just didn't fly.
In which case you'd have to get an appraisal to determine fair market value rather than like P and S. So, but yeah, in either case, it, it's division.
All right, and then I M C update on Superior Court case.
Uh, this is something we've been tracking for a while, it was no surprise, uh, at all, uh, but this is something that's created some, uh. Some real questions among the tax collectors and not chooses, so, uh, hopefully this'll bring things toward, uh, clarity, uh. Cause yeah, I, I know, you know.
They impact us on some parcels.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did we ever keep the excess?
That's what I was gonna get, you could, you don't want to keep the excess.
Uh, or did we just keep the amount that was owed?
Right, less legal and.
No, once you take the property, you own the property. No one has, until these cases, we put in that recourse to come back and.
So, such a weird, uh.
Well, but on the other hand, like, let's say you have a property worth three hundred thousand dollars and you owe five grand in taxes and. You just don't pay your taxes and the town takes it and then you get to get two hundred ninety five thousand dollars from the town? Like without having sold your property, like, that's opposing a pretty big.
Oh, I, no, the, 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 we'll have to resolve that, so your argument's gone now.
Yeah, no, I know, but, but it's.
No, it, it never makes sense, it, it, so did we have like an exposure in this?
No, it's more just, it, it's kind of put a, uh, chill on moving forward with.
Oh, I see, I see.
Due to the.
They, they found it worthwhile to do if they were getting the excess, you know.
Well, it just, it raises questions that were not answerable until it were.
Right, right.
Kind of clear about this.
Well, and so if there's any taking now that you would. Want to exercise. But the value is considerably higher than the tax, like, yeah, back taxes, then what do you do? Do you?
Oh, no, you, you give them the.
You take it, you kick back.
But, but do you locate a town meeting to appropriate those funds?
Yeah.
Do you have to liquidate the sale?
They have, they can't, they can't front bills.
Right, I mean, it raises, it raises questions.
So pressing legislation. Get rid of those questions.
Yeah, so I'm sure the legislature will get that off.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, to me.
By the way, you were right, that's where Catalo was.
Oh.
I don't know if it's more relevant that it's next to the train station or next to Metzies.
Metzies, Metz, yeah.
Yeah.
Over and by there, that's right, they just take your right phone.
Was there a second?
Charge.
That sounded a second, yeah.
All right.
My, I, I'm very.
I'll just imagine if I can get the minute.
I'm sure you'll.
Yeah, did you review all of them? Still checking if you're still doing.
They come back on, yeah. Well, Rick didn't wanna be the clerk, so I can start with.